...on January 6, 2020. Happy New Year to everyone. And with the advent of the new year, we begin our discussion tonight of zoning bylaws. What I'm going to do tonight is hold public hearings on the proposed zoning bylaw. We have a, we don't have as long of an agenda as usual. So to, we usually just introduce the articles and then we don't take any public comment. However, what I'm going to do tonight, because we have a smaller agenda, I am going to introduce the article, going to have a presentation from either staff, a board member. We're going to have board questions and then we'll take public comment tonight as well. So we're not going to vote on any of the articles tonight, but we'll certainly happy to take public comment and input from the public on each article. So the first article is "The Abandonment or Discontinuance of Nonconforming Single Family and Two-Family Dwellings." The intent of this article is to specify exemptions that relate to abandoned or discontinued nonconforming single family and two-family dwellings. The proposed amendment would more clearly state that a conforming single family or two-family dwelling use could be reestablished in a dimensionally nonconforming building or structure that had been abandoned or discontinued. The amendment would also limit the changes that could then be made to the building or structure to those that either, one, maintain or improve the nonconforming dimensions, and, two, add or expand in a manner that complies with current height and yard requirements or act on anything related thereto. So we do have the benefit tonight of having Emily Wentworth with us tonight. And Emily, if you'd like, I know this article has come to us from the ZBA.
Yes.
So if you'd like to introduce it and tell us a little about, that'd be great.
Happy to. Thank you for having me here this evening. You summarized the goal of the proposed amendment. I'll just step back a moment and let you know why the zoning board opted to pursue this this year. And actually, there was a different iteration of a similar amendment that they had proposed last year and ultimately withdrew. So it's some, it's language that exists in our bylaw that staff and the board have struggled with over a number of years. We've received inquiries from members of the public that may have inadvertently abandoned or discontinued a single-family home in particular, potentially a two-family home. And we've scratched our heads and tried to figure out, well, what does this language really mean? We've gone back and reviewed town meeting transcripts because this particular section of the bylaw, Section 3I, which deals with nonconforming conditions, has been amended over the years. And it's been interpreted in its present form to really limit restoration, particularly of single and two-family dwellings, to the existing building. And in certain instances, it seemed impractical or infeasible to actually reuse that building. And there's been a discussion about whether there's a benefit to the public, the neighborhood, by letting a derelict building just sit there because it makes no sense to restore that structure and instead, you know, maybe reconstruction would be appropriate so it could still be used and then in the future be maintained. So in certain respects, this proposed amendment would expand the current bylaw and others, it would actually be a little bit more limiting. But the overarching goal was to clarify the language. And you may not believe that after reading the draft amendment, but hopefully you will at the end of the presentation. It's dense material. I apologize for that. It's just kind of the nature of nonconformities. Happy to answer questions as we go along. You know, just feel free to chime in. So to step back a tiny bit and just provide some context for the public primarily, we're talking about nonconformities. What is a nonconformity? It's a use or a structure that was in existence or lawfully begun prior to a zoning amendment that would make it no longer comply with new standards. There are some examples. There can be nonconforming uses. One of the ones that we often look at are single-family dwellings in a business district, for instance. So like, you know, the homes along North Street, or there's a handful of homes on Old Derby Street that are in an office park. Those are nonconforming uses because we wouldn't today allow a single family in the downtown or an office park, but when those homes were constructed, it either predated zoning entirely or it was lawful at the time. We have a few examples around town of retail stores in residential districts, kind of the inverse of that first example. Those predate the adoption of zoning that rendered them nonconforming. So they can be maintained. And then also, what's kind of an interesting example is that two-family dwellings that were created before we required a special permit, those also are considered nonconforming, even if they would comply with the special permit provisions today. So the town of Hingham allowed two families new construction and/or conversions prior to 1955 by right. Thereafter, brand-new two families were no longer permitted. And then eventually, by the early '60s, we required a permit for even the conversion of a single, of a, yeah, a single-family home to a two-family home. So those that were created by right and then thereafter would only be allowed by special permit, those are also considered preexisting nonconforming uses. We also have preexisting nonconforming structures. These are structures that don't comply with dimensional standards. So a single-family home in Residence District A, which today would require a 20,000-square-foot lot, but back in 1941 maybe only required an 8,500-square-foot lot, that today would be considered nonconforming. A building or a structure located in a setback or a, you know, a side yard or a front yard, that would be considered nonconforming in terms of its dimensions. Or a structure that exceeds the height limits, either in terms of the linear measurement or the number of stories, also would be considered nonconforming. So those are the uses and structures that we're dealing with. There's certain regulations, both at the state level and the local level, that deals with these structures. In particular, in the Zoning Act, MAFS Generalized, Chapter 48, Section 6, it states that a zoning ordinance or bylaw may define and regulate nonconforming uses and structures, abandoned or not used, for a period of two years or more. So this is a permission that the state gives municipalities. At the local level, Hingham's taken advantage. We've adopted Section 3I of the zoning bylaw, which does in fact define abandonment and discontinuance, or that non-use. It also establishes protections for when a nonconforming use may be lost through abandonment or discontinuance, and then under very certain circumstances, when it may be restored or reestablished. For instance, Section 3I-1B provides what's commonly referred to as restoration after catastrophe. It allows property owners of a nonconforming building or structure to restore that building if it's damaged by casualty or, you know, fire or natural disaster, something along those lines, but only within a two-year period, after which the nonconformity or the protection, protected status would be lost. There are other protections afforded in this section of the bylaw for nonconforming uses. Those are highlighted here. These are primarily the existing regulations and the zoning board is really not intending to substantively change the protections for nonconforming uses that have been abandoned or discontinued. But just so folks know, and if anybody is following along in the actual bylaw, these are on the bottom of page 48. The current text reads that a nonconforming use, so that could be the retail store in a residential district, other than a single-family or two-family residential use that has been discontinued for a period of more than two years, shall not be reestablished and any future use shall conform to the bylaw. The next section also relates to use, but specifically to single-family and two-family dwellings or accessory buildings thereto, that have been discontinued for a period of more than four years, shall not be reestablished and any future use shall conform to this bylaw. So we have a broader exemption for single-family and two-family dwellings. The only thing that the zoning board is proposing to change in these, this section, it's actually subsection I, is to update the reference to emboldened text and parentheses, "single-family or two-family residential use," to match the language in the second subsection that already exists and refer instead to a single-family dwelling or two-family dwelling because that's how those uses are in other places referred to in the bylaw. So it's not substantive in any way. It's just intended to update the language. So those are existing protections for nonconforming uses that may be abandoned or discontinued. I'm sorry, this is where things get really dense. And this is really the meat of the proposed amendment where there would be some substantive change. The current text in little three is in that kind of aqua color at the top of the slide. So right now, our bylaw provides that a nonconforming structure, so this again is something that doesn't dimensionally comply with the bylaw. It's in a setback. It's too tall to meet today's standards. So that structure that's been discontinued, not used or occupied, for a period of more than two years, or has been abandoned, may not be used or occupied for any use with the following exceptions. So subsection A, and there's two subsections, but we're only touching A, reads presently that this subsection does not apply to, shall not prohibit, the conforming use of a lawful nonconforming single-family dwelling as a single-family dwelling, including accessory buildings, or conforming use of a lawful nonconforming two-family dwelling as a two-family dwelling, including accessory buildings. The language we found to be imperfect, in particular when it comes to two families, because sometimes it's not lawful nonconforming two-family use. Maybe it's not something we would presently allow today, but it would have been had it not been deemed discontinued or abandoned. So we've tried to update the language, actually to mirror the next subsection, B, that handles things a little bit better. And if you can follow, if I just read it out loud, because this is not on the slide, the current text in B reads, except as provided in the foregoing, "the conforming use of a building or structure that would have been a lawful nonconforming building or structure if it had not been deemed discontinued or abandoned hereunder may be permitted upon the issuance of a special permit." That language reads a little more clearly. So our proposed amendment would mirror it in some respects by stating that this subsection shall not apply to and shall not prohibit the conforming use of a building or structure that would have been a lawful nonconforming building or structure if it had not been deemed discontinued or abandoned hereunder as a single-family dwelling or a two-family dwelling. So that again is just an update. It's not, that first section of the paragraph is not really intended to change the substance of the regulation, but rather just update the language to match what we believe is a little bit clearer in the very next section. After the "provided however," that's where we're getting into actual changes. So I'll read it first and then explain what it means. So "provided however that any alteration, reconstruction, addition, extension, or structural change to the building or structure shall, one, maintain or improve the dimensional conditions that were once nonconforming until abandoned or discontinued; and, two, any addition or extension to the building or structure conforms to the applicable height and yard dimensions under Section 4A or Dimensional Table." So the way the current text reads, that we don't prohibit the, you know, the lawful nonconforming single-family dwelling to be used as a single-family dwelling, that's been read through, you know, our interpretation of town meeting transcripts and former presentations to this board, as limiting the reestablishment to that specific structure. And would not allow for a reconstruction or an extension under Hatfield or anything along those lines. We wanted to make that clear that you may be able to reconstruct the structure. However, you would not be able to take advantage of another exemption under the bylaw, which is commonly referred to as the Hatfield Amendment, where you may extend a nonconforming setback as long as you don't worsen it, go closer to a property line, for instance. Here, any additions, you could reconstruct within the existing envelope, the former lawfully nonconforming envelope, but any addition or extension would have to comply with current standards. So you'd have to be 15 feet from a side yard setback if you're in Residence A or 20 feet if you're in Residence B or C. So that's what we're hoping to get at through that language. Here's a visual, if this helps you better understand it. So the first example on the right, this could be, are preexisting nonconforming single-family dwelling. It's located within the front yard setback. Well, we're assuming this is Residence District A. Those dash lines represent the building setbacks. 25 feet is required by today's standards, and we'll assume this house was built at a time when we, either before zoning was adopted or when we had a less restrictive setback. So it's located 15 feet from the front yard property line. If this house were abandoned or discontinued and somebody, after the two-year period, wanted to reestablish use of that building, they would be able to today, if they're in a residential district where single-family homes are allowed by right. What they would not be allowed to do is in the middle image. So the middle image necessarily by right, and certainly not what's shown in the image on the far right, where a house is being reconstructed, even though the reconstruction is improving the nonconformity. Today, we would require that that person get a variance to do that. And if we bump back to the middle image, I've just, I've shown two additions. The one to the rear of the property, near that garage, that would comply with all setbacks. That would be allowed under this exception, this proposed amendment. The one at the front of the home, a portion of that would be permissible under this language, but the crosshatched portion would not be. That's an example of what Hatfield would allow for somebody who has always maintained their property, but for the home that's been abandoned or discontinued, this would more clearly state that you could not, you could not do that. You can't do an addition that doesn't comply with today's standards. Something I've not mentioned but should is that the current text as proposed removes from the bylaw the reference to "including accessory buildings thereto." So the garages would be treated differently than the principal use of the property. In part, that was seen as an equity issue. Today, there's, you know, a single-family homeowner who has an older accessory structure in their rear yard that no longer really functions as, you know, its intended use because cars have changed over time or it's deteriorated in its condition. They're required to get a variance, even to build within the same footprint and the same envelope. And it seemed inequitable to grant property owners who had abandoned their properties greater rights. So the second subsection of three could provide a loophole where they would be able to get a special permit to reoccupy something salvageable, but if they're going to the extent of reconstructing, it would have to comply with today's standards, just as any other single-family or two-family property owner has to do. So hopefully, that's clear. I would imagine there would be questions.
Excellent presentation. Very, very good. Individuals were great. Mary, are we going to put this on our website, I imagine?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Excellent. Great. All right, so let's open up the board questions. Garrett, go ahead.
I had some questions, if I could. In terms of, the first question is on discontinuance and use. I'm trying to understand the definitions and maybe I can put it in the context of an example because that's easier, I think, to understand. So let's say, for example, you have a house that was built, a residence that was built in town, and it was built before the 1941 bylaw was enacted. And that residence is either a single family or it is a two-family at that time. Subsequent to that time, it could have been converted to a two-family with a special permit. And that's after 55, or is that?
Actually, after the '60s. It was allowed by right from 55 to 62, I think.
55, okay. Yeah. And so then the situation on use. And for example, let's say a person is in assisted living and they are not living in the house, but the house is fully intact. In other words, it's being used because all the belongings are in the house, but a person isn't necessarily living there full-time because they're in another situation. And that situation could have a timeframe of one year, five years, what have you. And let's say the family is keeping the house intact with all of the person's belongings for the eventual possibility that they might come back to that house or somebody else might occupy it. I guess my question is, in terms of use versus occupancy and discontinuance, if the house is fundamentally used, it's intact, it's protected, it's, the lights are on, it's heated. It's not abandoned, you know, like the Baileys Mansion on It's a Wonderful Life, for example, before they took it over. In that situation, I'm trying to understand how use would change the parameters or the issue of the definition of discontinuance. Because what I'm thinking is, is that if in fact that two-year period or that four-year period goes by, does that mean that the house can no longer be used, can no longer continue, it's no longer continuance legal nonconformity and it has to be completely redone relative to, in terms of its legality, relative to current zoning for that district?
We don't often see that example. So we, I don't know that the town would know whether someone is living in assisted living and nobody else is residing in the home. The definition of discontinuance in the zoning board is not proposing to change any of these definitions, but the existing definition says discontinuance shall mean the actual cessation of any use or the non-use of any structure. Now, if all their belongings are still there, all the customary equipment associated with that use is still there, even if someone's not living there, I don't know that it would necessarily be on someone's radar. The examples that we're seeing, and I'm, that's kind of an enforcement issue, I guess, or an interpretation issue. The cases that we are seeing are instead, for example, a house on an undersized lot, someone pulls a building permit or demolition permit, initiates construction, tears out the kitchen, takes down walls, and then has something else, some other project or something else going on that takes them away from completing that project. The permits lapse and the house sits there for five years. So it's now, and now it's being represented that that house that they started working on, they can't even salvage it. So it's sat there for so long that now they want to reconstruct it. So it's more often that we're put on notice when there's a permit actually pulled and in the case of somebody who's just not living there, we wouldn't necessarily know.
So then, if I understand it correctly, if the house has become derelict in that, if it's been changed or not changed, but it's become derelict and it's no longer habitable, is that really a definition of discontinuance? Or if a house is just empty, but it's basically not derelict, it's legally nonconforming, if someone wants to come in after the two- or four-year period, does a special permit have to be applied for the house to maintain its legal nonconformity? Or whether it's a single or a two? Or, I'm just trying to understand how the...
For the single family, most likely not. The two-family is kind of an odd case where that is considered a nonconforming use in almost every instance, unless it's been especially permitted, two-family. So though, because that's considered a nonconforming use, I think they're kind of subject to the four years on the reestablishing the use. If it goes beyond the four years and it's in a residential district, they could put a single family in that structure, potentially, because that's a conforming use of a structure that would have been...
By right, they could do a single because the Residence District allows that, as long as they meet the dimensional criteria.
Yes, without the special permit. Now, they could potentially qualify for the special permit for the two-family use. So in addition to reestablishing the nonconforming structure, we'll assume it's nonconforming dimensionally and in terms of its use, if they meet the datebase criteria and then, you know, the number of rooms, and it still appears like a single-family home, they could potentially attain a special permit under Section 3A 1.2. 3A 1.2 does not allow reconstruction. So while this may allow reconstruction, if you need the special permit for the use and that prohibits it, you've got to make a choice.
Is there a way to have, since the original, let's say we look at the two-family option, if the two-family was originally made legal by a special permit process, wouldn't then a vehicle to continue it and preserve it as a building, not necessarily have only, the only option to reconstruct it? Could that be also a special permit vehicle so that a special permit on a special permit?
I think absent changing 3A 1.2 and removing that datebase criteria. So if they got the special permit, then it's, then it's, then it had to have been a house built before 1941. It qualified for this, and then if you reconstruct it, you no longer qualify for that special permit. So the use, you're kind of vacating the use. It's a strange circular thing that's happening with the two families that have gone on longer than the four years. I will say, like, the applicability of this current, the current language we reviewed or the proposed language is pretty limited. We don't see a lot of these cases. Just when we see them, they're really complicated and it would be nice to try to clarify it, provide a little more flexibility if a house, you know, if a structure can't be saved. And then, on the opposite side, a little more equity with the folks who have done the right thing and they've always maintained their nonconforming accessory structures.
Right. And it seemed to me that when I initially read the language, I thought that it was more favorable to providing reconstruction in a new structure rather than preserving the old structure. And I was thinking, given the amount of historic structures and the character in the town and as these structures age, wouldn't it be equitable to have that special permit option where you could actually, you could actually continue the existing building with a special permit and thereby not have the onus on the owner go to a new construction?
For accessory structures or for the principal?
I'm thinking the principal.
Yeah, so you can do that. You can do that by right. You don't need the special permit. So what, right now, you could reoccupy that historic structure if it had been abandoned or discontinued by right. What you can't do is necessarily make modifications to it.
So you can't extend it past its current dimensional reality? So you can't extend it past its current dimensional reality?
That's the way it's been interpreted. All the language at the prior town meeting spoke to restoration and never used the words reconstruction or expansion. You know, we've seen some really very historic structures that don't have the appropriate ceiling heights to be useful or like can't really accommodate the functional use of that exact building. Other uses outside of single and two-families, which the zoning board's not proposing to change, but they... If it's a conforming use in the district, they are eligible to get a special permit to reoccupy that structure. The reconstruction's not being extended to, you know, the business use in the downtown that's allowed by right. It would protect the existing structure, though, and allow it to be used again.
Great, thank you.
Kevin, any questions?
I'm just curious. I anticipate seeing more of this relative to the accessory dwellings as opposed to the residential units themselves.
Of the accessory structures? I'm concerned that there might be the ability to take advantage of those provisions and say, "Listen, I've not used this structure for however long. Come look at it. I can't even put my storage or my lawnmower in there." And I'm concerned that people may claim that they have abandoned their accessory structure and then try to, by right, go ahead and rebuild it. So, you know, I just want the dialogue to be clear that this is... It's taking out the accessory structure from the language. So it can't be read as if you can reconstruct those by claiming it's been discontinued or abandoned.
Yeah, I'm thinking that, you know, this growing focus on, you know, allowing accessory dwelling structures to be used as potentially second residents or part of the residence might interact with this in a level we're not anticipating and thinking about, you know, people rebuilding these to be more like dwelling units as opposed to a garage or something like that and allowing that by right. Not that that's problematic, but we should at least think about whether or not we want to allow that or not.
Good point.
As drafted, they would not be able to. It would... I mean, it would be limited to its current envelope.
Sure.
No, I think my... My one question, largely answered, which is how frequently has this... Have these come before the board? Have... And those two examples right there, if they came before the board, what would happen?
So right to the two... The middle and the one on the right?
Yes.
They would not be allowed to do the one on the far right. The one in the middle, through a special permit, they have allowed conforming extensions, but not the hashed portion at the front.
Right, okay, that was going to be my question. So that the crosshatch square in the front would be not allowed?
Not allowed, no. No, it's allowed for single... Non-conforming, single and two-families that have always been maintained, but not those that have been...
Been abandoned.
So hopes that a structure that currently could take advantage of the Hatch Act and basically build to...
Hatfield.
Hatfield, sorry.
Laura, I'm familiar with it.
Fray and slip. Hatfield Amendment. I shake when I say that. No.
You got it out, though.
You got it out, though. I did get it out. Practice a little bit more. So a structure that is eligible to take advantage of the Hatfield Amendment, i.e. to build to the setbacks at the time that the building was permitted, but not to incur further into those setbacks. The picture, the diagram in the middle says that they're not eligible to take advantage of the Hatch Act. What distinguishes or what... In the language, how is that covered? In other words, is it a building that's protected by some other entity, a historic district, a historic register, a Hatfield Amendment? Are those all structures that are protected elsewhere and not part of this?
Of the proposed amendment? Yeah, so in part, and I'm sorry, I kind of skipped over this. Item three of the proposed amendment says that non-conforming conditions established pursuant to the above exceptions, either the by right for single and two families or the special permit for other structures, shall no longer be considered non-conforming once a building permit or special permit has issued. The Hatfield Amendment applies to non-conforming structures. Once these structures have been re-established, they wouldn't be eligible for that. They're basically allowed either via an exception or via a special permit and therefore would not be non-conforming.
So the language here, then, the vehicle would be then the special permit, not a by right?
To do the... What Hatfield would allow if you had been abandoned? No, you wouldn't be able to do it even through the special permit. The only way you can re-establish that single or two-family use is by meeting the requirements in item two. If it would be helpful, I can send the language the zoning board had proposed last year where it actually specifically said the Hatfield Amendment shall not apply to these structures and maybe that would be preferable. The intent of item three was to get there, but just so there aren't, you know, zoning administrators in the future and building commissioners and planning directors scratching their heads down the road or reviewing town meeting transcripts, maybe we can just state it again.
Buildings that were, let's say, pre-1941, they met the codes then, but they don't meet today's current building in terms of height. What happens to those under this? Is this... Is there... Is there an addition allowed that allows the building to be... Comply with the building code and then also comply with the zoning code or...
Yeah, I mean, it depends on where in the lot that building is located. If it's in a setback, there might be a portion of it that can't expand in that setback. Well, let me think this real quick. So they can maintain or improve the dimensional conditions that were once non-conforming until abandoned. So if it's in a setback, it's in the setback in that current condition, putting more massing in it is not maintaining or improving that non-conformity. But then the second section says, "Any addition or extension to the building or structure conforms to the applicable height and yard dimensions." So you could put like a second floor addition conceivably on it, but not within that yard setback. It would have to be pulled in somehow.
So you'd have to work within the three-dimensional envelope to get the building code clearances met? Great.
The question I had was to the definition of discontinuance and abandonment. You already kind of answered that. Gary brought up an individual potentially assisted living. I thought of a mobilized service member, but it seems like there's more indicia of abandonment than just occupancy.
Yep.
And then the other question I had, Emily, was a lot of times with our by-law proposals, we look to neighboring towns to see if they have anything similar, if you do anything.
Not recently. We did last year, back in 2012. Actually, the planning board did a substantial amount of that as well. And actually, there's... We reviewed amendments going back, I think, to 1962 or somewhere thereabouts where the town increased its protections to the two-year because that's what most towns were doing. There are other towns who have even more standards. Under these circumstances, you can re-establish the use through this permitting mechanism, you know, under some other circumstances, you need the special permit. We do that to some extent, but it's not as detailed as like, say, Duxbury is one that's coming to mind. I could give you some examples if you want to see how other folks are handling it. I think the zoning board tried to kind of stay within the structure that we have. We borrowed a little bit of language from the Hatfield Amendment. You can reconstruct, extend, you know, amend, but then tried to put controls on it that Hatfield doesn't have. So it's, you know, not an opportunity necessarily to mansion as a... Like, you know, make a mansion out of an abandoned structure, but instead, you know, it's intended to update it so that it's... Can be functional.
Thank you. I know that we have a lot of folks in the audience here. If anybody would like to speak or offer any comment, please approach the microphone and state your name and address and let us know your thoughts on the topic. Mr. McElany.
Andy McElany, 26 Myers Farm Road. I have a question that may display my ignorance, so I'll apologize in advance, but could you go back to the slide that shows the proposed amendment language? In the proviso, where it says, "Shall one maintain or improve the dimensional conditions," and then under two, it talks about height and yard dimensions. Are those things the same?
Height and yard?
No. Dimensional conditions and height and yard dimensions the same?
So the first item is intended to say you can reuse the existing footprint or envelope of the non-conforming structure. So it's really speaking more to what once was there. The second part is intended to talk about additions or extensions, what could be there. So maintain or improve the dimensional conditions that were once non-conforming until abandoned. You could simply move back in to that house. You're maintaining the whatever non-conforming conditions were there. Let's say that front yard setback, that's 15 feet. Alternately, you could improve those conditions through reconstruction in essence, which would be the image on the right where you're pulling that structure back from the front property line. Or two... The second item speaks to the additions or extensions. So that's really the middle image or what Gary was speaking to earlier about building height, any second floor additions that conform both to the 35-foot height limit, two and a half stories, and any yard dimensions?
Then maybe my second question is legitimate. I'm not counting on it, but... So it seems to suggest that you can... If you do an addition or an extension, you can both maintain the dimensional conditions of the non-conforming, but also you're required to meet the current height and yard dimensions? Is that inconsistent?
Because it says "and"?
Yeah. For an addition or extension, it says you have to... You shall maintain the non-conforming and then it says "and" you have to conform with the current. Is that inconsistent?
That's a good question. Shall maintain or improve?
And so I guess I was just...
It certainly need to be "or." It's not intended to be that you can only do one or the other, but maybe...
I thought maybe if you deleted addition or extension...
From the first.
Yeah, and so...
I think that's a very legitimate comment, right?
That's a...
It is a good comment.
A happy coincidence, eh?
Thank you, Andy. That is... That is a good comment. Anyone else in public like to speak? Mr. Isador.
How are you?
Happy New Year to you.
Bruce Isador, 6 Huron Way. I just have a question in interest of full disclosure. I have a client that could be somewhat affected by this that has permits in hand, but is thinking of doing some other things with respect to the property. And I'm looking at this zoning change. One of the things that comes to mind is reading 1.2 by itself, not dealing with abandonment or discontinuance. 1.2 of the use table says that you basically, if you predate, if you predate 1941, when zoning came into effect, and look like a single family but can convert it to a two-family use with a special permit. So the question I have is, let's take a couple of examples. There's no abandonment or discontinuance. The 1941 home is used consistently as a two-family use, has the permit, and there's a fire and burns the ground. We have a restoration paragraph in the non-conforming structures. They can clearly rebuild. Can they use it as a two-family? Now, they burnt to the ground, they're not a pre-1941 house. Second example, 1941 house complies with all zoning or doesn't comply with zoning requirements. Well, let's do both examples. Complies with zoning requirements and just wants to reconstruct the house and can do so as a matter of right. And if chooses to re... And the house, if we were protecting the house in some other way by being, you know, either historic register with respect to demolition or being in a historic district, but we have nothing to protect the particular house that I'm talking about. They weren't using it as a two-family. They... And they were a single-family use, they could tear down that pre-1941 house and build from scratch. They comply with all zoning requirements. But if they're using it as a two-family house, we're saying, "You can't do that." Or, "I think that's an interpretation that's being given. You can't do that." Or suppose, they don't comply with all zoning requirements, but they comply with Hatfield. They've been in continued use. We interpret Hatfield to really take it down to bare bones and start all over again as long as you're meeting the dimensional non-conformities. Again, they want to reconstruct like somebody else and then they're told, "Well, you're not a 1941 house anymore, so therefore you'll lose your two-family use." So it seems to me, that seems to be an initial question because if, in fact, we use the... My understanding is, and this is just generality, but 1.2 came into effect because when zoning was coming to an effect in Hingham, a lot of people that had existing properties who didn't want zoning to take place at all and said, "I don't want to be affected by this zoning change. I want to be able to use my property how I want to use my property." And they were told, "Okay," and so they supported the zoning. And to some extent, this 1.2 came about out of that. If you really think about it, if we were taking it to its logical conclusion, that would mean they also wanted the ability to tear down their house and build a new house back in 1941, 1943 or '45. We're stopping that now because we're kind of saying, "Well, we'll give you the right to rebuild, but you lose your continued use." There seems to be something unfair about having a right to rebuild, having a right to come in and lose a use when you have a right to do that. If, in fact, either the zoning changes to reflect that these people do have a right to rebuild or we interpret it that they have a right to rebuild, then you look at this zoning change and you sit there and say, "Well, what it's saying is..." And I think it's good language. I think, you know, I've worked a little bit with Emily on this and I think it's well-done. "We're saying, if you were a two-family or a single family and you were deemed abandoned or discontinued, then we can get into all kinds of discussions about what that means. But assuming you've met that standard and you want to come back in and use it for a conforming use, we'll let you do that under this change as a matter of right without even getting to reconstruction. We'll let you do that as a matter of right." Okay, what is a conforming use? Well, in most districts, residential districts, a single family is a conforming use. But if I had a permit under 1.2, special permit, or I had a special permit... I don't know if there's in-law... I'm not familiar with all this zoning, but whether in-law apartments need special permits or other things that need special permits. By definition, if they've gotten that special permit, are they then a conforming use because they have a permit that says they can do it? It's a matter of right with the permit. And so I was looking at possibly coming in at some point requesting changes to allow 1.2 to be deemed a conforming use, but then you're reconstructing a property that's no longer once reconstructed pre-1941. And we have the question of interpretation because you're going to let somebody that's abandoned to use get the benefit of reconstruction and somebody who's been never abandoned to use can't do it. It seems to me that everybody should be allowed to do it because the house itself is not protected. If it weren't a two-family use, that house could be torn down and started from scratch. We're not protecting that house, that pre-1941 house. We have other mechanisms to protect it, but we're not protecting it with the zoning change. So I guess where I come from is that we try to get some clarity to the existing zoning about what happens to these houses that have permits and whether they can reconstruct because I think there's at least a view within the building department that says, "Well, if you comply with Hatfield, you can reconstruct." That's why this is coming about, saying, "Well, these don't comply with Hatfield anymore because they've been abandoned or discontinued, so we need to get them their own mechanism." But I'm only saying, if we're going to address the 1.2 issue, we need to address it on both sides, one with the abandonment or discontinuance issue and one with the one that hasn't been abandoned or discontinued because I think they should have the rights to reconstruct. It's not a protected house. They shouldn't lose their two-family use merely because they're reconstructing their house. And the perfect example is a fire, okay, which forces the reconstruction. So I'll be back in further discussions when we get further down the line. Thanks.
All good points, thank you. Mr. Patch.
Tom Patch, Ship Street. So I've also worked with Emily.
So, I've also worked with Emily on this, and I kind of went at it from a public policy point of view, because typically, when you have these abandoned structures like this, there's a reason for it. You know, basically, people look at it in terms of economic value, and it's just not there to get them to do something with the property. So, the neighbors end up having what they probably consider an ice ore or something, that nothing is getting done. But from a developer's point of view, and I've represented a lot of developers, they're looking at it from the financial end to make it work. So, you know, I looked at this on the Hatfield issue, losing your Hatfield rights is sort of a balancing of interests between the person who needs to have the economic incentive to do something with this property, and the concerns of the neighbors. Because certainly, you know, the neighbors are sitting there and saying, "Well, you know, we don't want a McMansion here. We do want something here." And since the current zoning basically is the baseline expectation level that everybody can say that they're entitled to, if you don't allow someone to have the benefit of Hatfield in these situations, the neighbors really aren't being harmed, because, you know, basically, all that's being done is that any additional massing to the house is going to conform with current zoning, and their expectation should be that stuff conforms with current zoning. But to get it done, you got to do something, be able to do something with the existing structure. Excuse me. You know, another part of the problem is, if you look at the structure, there could be issues with the structure. Part of the structure might be, you know, in a wetlands, or not a, you know, a soupy area in terms of foundation, or something like this. So, you might have to carve off, you know, reduce that structure. You shouldn't be limited necessarily to the structure that's there. You might, for whatever reason, you know, the circumstances are, that it might work that you actually pull back, as Emily was talking, you can pull back the structure, because that works better. So, like I said, so I see this from a public policy point of view. To get something done, I heard what Bruce was saying. My only concern is, it's what his concerns were, seemed a little bit beyond scope of what is being proposed. And I think, while I agree with a lot of what he says, I think that shouldn't be an impediment to get this done, because I think we need to get this part of it done. So, that's my two cents.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, I want to thank Emily again for your time tonight. You're welcome to stay if you'd like, or... Thank you. The next proposed article is Section 4-A and 4-B, Lot Coverage Restrictions. The intent of this article is to set lot coverage restrictions for both buildings in hardscape and residential zoning districts A, B, C, D, and E, or act on anything related thereto. And this proposal was, has come forth from Commissioner Tondropdick. So, Gary, I'm going to let you discuss it, and then we can fire away with questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This article, some background, this article came about because of a number of residents and feedback, basically asking, "We have horizontal setback requirements. We have a height restriction in residential districts, but we don't really have any three-dimensional restrictions on the maximum size, or massing, or scale of a structure in any one of the residential districts." So, my reference would be the table on page 51 in the bylaw. And in that table, there are a series of silent portions in the bylaw where we have, for example, Residence District A, 20,000-square-foot area, frontage is, minimum frontage 125 feet, maximum height 35 feet, maximum stories two and a half, maximum percentage which may be covered by all buildings, and that portion of the bylaw is silent. There is no restriction at all currently stated, other than the setbacks, and then what you can deduct from the height, or deduce, sorry, from the height. And the side front yard dimension setback is 25 feet, the side yard setback is 15 feet, the rear yard setback is 15 feet. Residence District B, where the minimum lot size is 30,000 square feet, the frontage is 150 feet, maximum height 35 feet, maximum number of stories two and a half. Again, the maximum percentage which may be covered by all buildings is, there's no reference. It's silent in the table. In terms of setbacks, front yard 35 feet, side yard 20 feet, rear yard 20 feet. Residence District C, 40,000 square foot minimum lot size, frontage is 150 feet, maximum height 35 feet, number of stories two and a half, maximum percentage which may be covered by all buildings, again, the bylaw is silent. There's no restriction, other than the deducing setback in height. Minimum setbacks, front yard 50 feet, side yard 20 feet, rear yard 20 feet. Townhouse, Residence District D, which is townhouse, does have a percentage, maximum percentage which may be covered by all buildings, and that's 20%. Residence District E, which is 30,000 square feet, 150-foot frontage, 35-foot height, two and a half stories, maximum percentage which may be covered by all buildings, again, it's silent. Front yard setback 35 feet, side yard 20 feet, rear yard 20 feet. So, the genesis of this was to basically enter in some percentage requirements into these residence districts, which would be the following. In Residence District A would be to insert 25% in the maximum percentage which may be covered by all buildings. In Residence District B would be to insert 20% maximum percentage which may be covered by all buildings. Residence District C would be to insert 20% in maximum percentage which may be covered by all buildings. And then, in Residence District E would be to insert 20% in maximum percentage. In addition to that, those four insertions into Residence District A, B, C, and E, there would be an additional proposal, an item, that would be amending Section 4B2 to insert the maximum hardscape lot coverage percentage shall be 10% in Residence Districts A, B, C, D, and E, at the end of the existing text. And the, in looking at this, the goal would be to basically have the new interventions, the new buildings that are proposed within a residence district, within the current allowed restrictions within the bylaw, be more compatible with the, kind of the existing scale and massing of the neighboring buildings in the residence district. This is not an article that talks about aesthetics, or talks about design, or talks about what the house looks like. It's more trying to get a more compatible, consistent scale within the residence districts. And so, I didn't do any diagrams. I might do that the next meeting to kind of make it perhaps graphically a little bit clear. But it's a, in talking with a number of folks, in planners in surrounding towns, Cohasset, Norwell, Situate, other towns have been moving in this direction. Cohasset has a very similar series of provisions in their bylaw. And again, the intent was to essentially give a set of restrictions that would help incentivize more of a compatibility in terms of consistency in the massing and scale of newer structures as they are permitted in residential neighborhoods. One of the things in doing the research for this article that I didn't include in this proposal, because I've been hearing, well, two things. One, it's essentially a design review, large house, site plan review proposal, which exists in Cohasset, and I've had a number of discussions with folks in Cohasset about the merits, and let's say, the demerits of that proposal. And also, talking with some folks in Norwell, came to a similar view, that perhaps we shouldn't pursue that. We have a number of other constraints in our historic districts where we have design review accordingly, similar to that, where change and interventions are managed in a sense of compatibility. So, I thought that it probably would be more appropriate to start here, start small, and then work forward if there were to be a favorable review of this type of a proposal.
Thank you.
Quite welcome.
Any questions for the board? Kevin?
I think we have to talk about this, but Gary, when we first brought this up, but any sense of how many projects that we see come before us, where this would, these would implicate projects or building permits that are pulled in town, that people have by right right now, and that they'd have to come before us to get some sort of special permit or dispensation?
In terms of quantities, I don't, but in terms of areas of the town where I'm seeing that something like this has come to the fore, in terms of response of residents, and seeing if there was something that could be done, is, for example, in Crow Point, where we have a lot of buildings that are being enlarged to the maximum size, either in height or in lot coverage. And the feedback and the response that I've received from a number of folks over there is that we're seeing a major change in the scale, and the density, and the overall character of the neighborhood relative to compatibility. So, I would say I could identify it by, a major percentage of those applications would be affected, although I don't think that the percentages that are inserted here, for example, in Crow Point, it would be 25%, because the lot sizes there are typically smaller, anywhere from seven, six, seven to 10,000 plus or minus square feet. I would say that in terms of where this is more centered, or where the feedback is coming from, it's really the northern part of the town. I think some of the lots are much larger in the southern part of the town, so you're still seeing it, but not to the same extent.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's one of the things that I expect to hear, whether we hear it tonight, or as we go forward, but who is this affecting? And, you know, is it disproportionately one, you know, section of neighborhoods versus others? Because it does. I mean, it limits what you can do on property, it limits the potential value of that property, you know, all of those things that I think people are going to want to comment on. But as we've talked about, finding a way to get at this situation, right, and the challenge that it's creating for neighborhoods is something that we need to work through, so...
Yes, I don't think it's limited to just one area of the town. There might be, because there's a higher density of settlement, let's say, in the northern area of the town, you might see more applications, but also all applications. And most of the lots that we've seen, and the site plan review that we've seen, the houses are very large, and compared to other houses in those neighborhoods on that lot size, it's noticeable, very noticeable. So, I wouldn't say that it's geographically centered. It's happening basically on pretty much all of our applications.
But point of order, these changes that you're proposing don't necessarily trigger an application to the planning board.
No.
So, to be clear, these are placing additional restrictions, and if somebody wants to cover more than 25% of their lot with a house, and then they would have to seek other relief. It would not come to the planning board. The trigger for the planning board, we're going to talk about next. This is just about further restricting what is permitted for, essentially, it's typically these demo and rebuilds, right? But it doesn't, it would not come to us. If this went forward, it would not necessarily increase your agenda, but it might increase somebody else's agenda.
And the focus and the intent was to basically address an area in the bylaw that's now silent on this.
So, would this change make the vast majority of District A pre-existing nonconforming?
Good question.
I don't think that analysis has been done.
I was kind of wondering, but look, I mean, just thinking, we brought up the Crow Point, thinking about Bradley Woods, Bradley Parks, I'm thinking, with this reduction, would we be creating a vast majority of that district to be pre-existing nonconforming?
Yeah, I don't think that, I don't know that a lot coverage analysis by district compared to the new proposed coverages has been undertaken.
And I guess my other question too is, how do you see this buttressing up against Hatfield?
Well, I see Hatfield as basically setting plan setbacks, dimensional restrictions, horizontally in plan, but it doesn't deal with massing. It basically allows you to go to a certain pre, you know, certain setback set when the house was built, but that's two-dimensional, it's not three. And this would involve everything within that, this, from the setback to the lot line is already preset by the setback stated in the districts. This basically addresses massing within that footprint, and that three-dimensional envelope. In terms of looking at the percentages here, and comparing them to kind of some of the densities that currently exist, you know, I don't think that this would, I don't think these restrictions are great. If we're looking at an existing situation like Bradley Woods, most of those properties don't even meet the 25% now. So, there's room for expansion within those current districts. This isn't saying you have to go back from that. It just kind of says, "Well, this is an equation that seems, it seems appropriate. The numbers could be discussed as to what, you know, should they be higher or lower." But I don't think it puts a, it doesn't put a reduction constraint on what's there now. In other words, if you have a 1,500-square-foot house on a 5,000-square-foot, 6,000-square-foot, or 8,000-square-foot parcel in Bradley Woods, that's much less, you know, the 25% would allow plenty of growth in that. I mean, just looking at Bradley Woods, for example...
Great points. Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? Anybody from the audience like to ask questions? Mr. Patch, see your hand up.
Tom Patch, Ship Street. So, I had a couple of questions on this. So, Gary, you came up with the 25%, the 20%. So, I'll try to ask the question, so then you can end up responding at the end. I just want to know sort of where those come from, okay? Secondly, to Billy's question, whether or not it would make existing properties nonconforming, I guess that would be just shooting from the hip, that would be whether or not the current structure looking down from the sky is more than whatever the 20, for example, if it's 25% in Residence A, which would basically be what, a 5,000-square-foot lot, you're looking at 1,250 square feet, so like a 40 by 30. So, I think a lot of the, I think just shooting, again, shooting from the hip, my knowledge of Bradley Woods, I don't think most of the properties there, the structures there, looking down on them are 40 by 30. I think they're small, those smaller capes, you know? Basically, what this is, you know, because I did a little research on this, and this is sort of your basic Euclidean, old-school zoning type of thing, and what they did was they moved, they moved, a lot of places in the country have this, and then they've moved on to a floor-area ratio, which is basically, has other public policy objectives to it in terms of traffic, and density, and stuff like this. So, one of the things that just kind of struck me, because I did look in other towns, and they tend to have more of the FAR thing, as opposed to, they've gone away from the basic, you know, looking down from the sky, how much the building can cover. But for example, I think I looked at the city, the town or city of Newton, and what they do is, within a district, they have different percentages depending on the lot size. So, basically, if your lot size is, say, between 5,000 and 10,000 square feet... So basically, if your lot size is, say, between 5,000 and 10,000 square feet, you would have hypothetically, say, 30% coverage. And then if it's 10,000 or 15,000 square feet, you have, you know, a little bit less percentage. Because essentially, if you do that, it tends to equalize out the size of the structures that you're getting across that neighborhood, as opposed, because right now, you could, in Residence A, the minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet. So you could have someone with a 20,000-square-foot lot and a 25% max building coverage, that's going to be a heck of a big, bigger building than somebody who's on a 7,500-square-foot lot. So, you know, so basically, I think maybe some consideration should be for that. You know, in terms of the impact, it's probably going to impact the Residence A district because most of the massing in the buildings are occurring in connection with the availability of sewer. Because based on our current Board of Health regulations, it's a little bit difficult to come up with structures of, you know, a much bigger size. So this is probably going to just impact any area that's sewed. So you have the Ware River District and the Residence, you know, the, most of the Residence A district is going to be impacted. I wouldn't say it's a disproportionate impact, it's just the fact of life, you know, that they have something available to them that other areas don't. The other thing I had a concern about was the hardscape issue and having a definition of hardscape, because one of the things I did find in doing some research about this is that there's a lot of difference of opinion on what should constitute hardscape. For example, does a pool constitute hardscape? You know, because it's anything, some municipalities have taken anything that creates an impermeable barrier to, you know, on the ground, whether it's sidewalk, driveway, you name it, a wall, anything like that, you know, what is this going to, what are we talking about? So I think that's something, another thing, I don't, is there a definition of, so that might be something to be worked on, on a definition of that, so people then have an expectancy of that. Because a lot of people spend a lot of money on hardscape landscaping, and I think in some of these bigger houses, they like that. You know, you see all these stone walls going all over the place, and you do see the big pools and so forth. So I think people need to understand what that's going to entail. And the last comment I wanted to make is that if you're going to stick at these percentages is that maybe perhaps consider, and I heard what Mary was saying about creating additional burdens for different boards, but, you know, it's always nice to, when you're starting something new, to have a relief valve put in place, so you could have, you know, by special permit, you could go another 10% or something like this. And so that basically allows for unexpected consequences of something like this. You hate to be, put someone in a position when you come in with a brand-new type of requirement that turns out may not fit every particular situation, and their only source of relief is to get a variance, which is difficult to get. But if you kind of allow some cushion in there for a special permit, then that addresses that issue too. I think that might give people a sense of feeling that, you know, worse, you know, there is some flexibility there in their particular situations. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Points well taken. Try to answer them all, I can't remember the order, but relative to the percentages in equalizing the building size versus the lot, I was trying to do that with these percentages because, for example, in Residence District A, although it's 10,000 square feet, many of the lots in District A are not 10,000 square feet, they're much smaller than that, and they're allowable also functionally because they're sewed typically. Lots in, let's say, C, for example, which are primarily septic, there's another series of constraints that impacts the density or the allowable density on those, the septic requirements of 12,500 square feet per bedroom. So this was an attempt by percentage to allow more in the smaller lot area so that it would equalize out. I think that looking at, for example, I did look at the Newton bylaw, and it's very well-defined. Our bylaw is silent relative to this, so I didn't know if we should go a full analysis of that. I mean, it's definitely well worth considering if it's going to help people understand it or, so that was relative to the percentage in the equalization. I think you're right, you need some kind of a vehicle. It can't be prescriptive, it has to be some kind of a vehicle that could allow addressing a unique situation that was, rather than having it be a variance, I think that's a, I can see where that would be a problem if the only relief was a variance. And so I think you raised some great points, a lot of research could be done on those.
Mr. Sealan?
Hi, Jerry Sealan, 166 Hershey Street. Just like to kind of follow up on, I think, what everybody's been saying. It seems to me that this probably is going to have a greater impact on some of the older parts of town, the Residence A, and it would be, I think, critical to really do a good analysis of how many properties are affected or could be affected. So for example, if you have, if you take one of these neighborhoods that we know have relatively small lots, I would count up all the number of houses that are just shy of 25%. I'd count up all the ones that are more than, because really what this is going to impact, I think, more than anything else will be additions. And, you know, we talk about how on some of these neighborhoods with smaller lots, the houses may not be so big right now, but a lot of them have garages. So this is, you start to combine a smallish house with a two-car garage, sometimes the garage is almost as big as the house itself. So I think, you know, it's really critical when we are kind of entering new territory like this is in a zoning bylaw, to really be as analytical as we can be with telling the people at town meeting how many properties will really, are likely to be affected going forward on the building coverage. Kind of shifting over to the hardscape, I think Tom's right, you have to kind of define it, but I really, I'm kind of concerned with a number of things on hardscape limitations, particularly 10%. One of them would be, and this is maybe a little kind of blue sky, but unintended consequences. If you have a small lot and 10% of a relatively small lot doesn't give you much room to do hardscape, you want to have a patio on the back or a pool or something like that, all of a sudden, maybe you can't have a driveway. And that could encourage on-street parking. So, you know, an unintended consequence of a very small limitation on hardscape could actually exacerbate problems of other natures that we can't really think of right now. But I think to some degree, a bigger concern is how do you enforce that one? A building coverage limitation is pretty easy, because that's going to come along with the building permit application, whether it's a new house or an addition. But, you know, how many people put patios down or driveways or walkways from the street to their front door? You don't get a building permit for that. And again, I think as a practical matter, this really is limited to very small lots, of which we have a number. But I think it kind of creates a situation that may be, in many ways, either unenforceable as our, as our current regulations stand, or would be pretty onerous to come up with an enforcement mechanism, or certainly out of the ordinary to what we currently have. So I think the enforceability of a limitation on hardscape such as this would be a challenge. Anyway, those are my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I see none. Thank you for your comments. We'll move on to our next proposed article, which is site plan review. The intent of this article is to make minor corrections and add clarifying language in section I-1 and to amend section 4-B.6.1B to delete the existing text and insert, quote, "all projects that (1) create a land disturbance or an alteration of drainage patterns over an area greater than 5,000 square feet, or (2) create a land disturbance of more than 1,000 square feet in areas with slopes greater than 10%, which lowers the threshold of disturbance that triggers site plan review or act on anything related thereto." So this comes from the planning board, and I know Mary's been a lot of work on it, so Mary, if I could turn it over to you to introduce this article?
Sure. I'll try to be brief in the interest of time. However, I will just say for this article and all the other articles, our, the information is on the planning board's webpage. So anyone at home or anyone that doesn't have any of the materials, it is all available online, and we'll be updating it as we go. This is site plan review kind of 2.0. You'll remember, we talked about this quite a bit last year, and this is a little portion of last year's zoning amendment that we pulled out. And your article in front of you has four items. Item one is simply a correction to a cross-reference, so that's, I see as just a correction. Item two is really just adding a capitalization to the word "in." Item three, the purpose of item three, you'll remember last year, we made some changes related to MS4 and trying to strengthen our erosion control and stormwater management provisions as required. And item three gets to tweak one of the provisions that we put in last year. So we had consultants that were working with the DPW, and they reviewed our regulations and compared them to mandates to make sure, is the town processing our permits with regard to stormwater control and erosion control in accordance with state and federal guidelines? And what we found was that in practice, we really already were doing a very good job, but the bylaw didn't really spell it out. For example, pre-construction meetings. The planning board typically would require pre-construction meetings. It didn't say it in the bylaw as a spelled-out condition. And so the consultants had said to us last year, well, that's great that you're doing it now, but when staff changes or the board members change and the pre-construction meetings stop happening, will construction management be impacted in any way? So last year, the planning board added on page 12 of your bylaw some standard conditions, and it's under, on page 11, eight conditions of approval and A, B, and C. Those were really conditions, clarifying language in our bylaw of things that we already did, but just to put it in writing and to make sure that when we're all gone, it's still happening. And so section three, item three basically clarifies, at the top of page 12A, under pre-construction meeting, we're adding the language, "for all projects requiring erosion control, installation, or any clearing," would be the new language, and then a pre-construction review meeting is required. Staff suggested that clarifier because the bylaw's pretty black and right, it says "conditions of approval. In addition to any other conditions as much as may be imposed by the planning board, all site plan approvals shall be subject to the following conditions." And as this board knows, not all site plan review actions involve active physical construction. So it felt awkward to be conditioning a pre-construction meeting for a project that didn't really have any construction. And so that's kind of, I see that as kind of a clarifier, not a hugely substantive change. Really, the substantive change is under item four, and that gets to what we talked about last year, and we ended up pulling out, and that's essentially to amend section 4-B.6.1B to modify the thresholds of land disturbance that would trigger site plan review. And right now, our bylaw currently says that if you're doing, it's on page 54, it's 4-B.6.1B, current language says, "all projects that create a land disturbance or an alteration of drainage patterns over an area greater than 20,000 square feet, or create a land disturbance of more than 2,500 square feet in areas with slopes greater than 10%. They require site plan review." Now, you would typically get those, one that comes to mind is the one on Harborview, that really steep slope, and the gentleman wanted to flatten out and create a backyard. That triggered your site plan review because of the steep slopes there. So that's an example. You've done this before on flatland or less than 10% sloped land, there was one on Crooked Meadow. It was an extensive landscaping alteration, pool, patio, swales, remember that one? That was the trigger for under, for 20,000 square feet or more. Basically, the first one, the Harborview one, got kicked to us because the building commissioner said, hey, you're clearly triggering this threshold, you require site plan review. The second one, the flatland one, that actually came to us because the neighbors started complaining, why are all these huge trucks coming down my street? What's going on? And what permit was issued? And so that kind of came to us that way. A lot of times, you get these site plan reviews under 4-B.6.1B that way, where work starts, construction starts to happen, and then it gets halted, and it comes to you kind of as either a midstream or after-the-fact type of approval. Part of that, even now, even if we don't change this provision, we probably internally as staff need to figure out another way to make more people aware of the existing provision, because really, a lot of people don't understand that. However, now, we're current, the current language in front of you is proposing to reduce the threshold for altering the drainage pattern from 20,000 square feet to 5,000 square feet, and for in areas with steep slopes, from 2,500 square feet to 1,000 square feet. And what does that really mean to us? I have a couple of maps online, and they're up there, and I have for you, I printed out two of these, and I thought you guys could each share, just in general. The first map that we created, I took a look at parcels that are greater than 20%, and then, so I'm passing down the two, the first one that I'm talking about is one I just passed down. So Kevin has one, and Gary, so if Kevin and Gary can share, and then, right. So this one says on the legend, "Hingham, Parcels by Area." And what this is intended to show you is that the green parcels are parcels that are less than 10,000 square feet, and the yellow or orange ones are between 10 and 20,000 square feet, and the ones that are white are greater than 20,000 square feet. So assuming that Hingham was flat as a pancake, right? You have 7,611 parcels, and that current 20,000-square-foot threshold means that 39% of these properties are not subject to site plan review. So if someone came in and wanted to alter that property, property line to property line, demo and rebuild, 39% of them would not come to you for site plan review. If you look at where these properties are, just to try to, you know, the purpose of this is just try to understand what are we talking about, and are we disproportionately affecting Crow Point or a certain part of town? Because that's what we always think about, we're affecting North Hingham. This is the flat-as-a-pancake provision, and most of these parcels that are colored, you'll see are residential. And when we have, we staff have problems with discharge of water into the way, erosion control into the way, enforcement issues with icing, public safety, or with DPW having to clean out the storm basins, it's typically resulting from residential construction. And unless we're, have the benefit of having a savvy developer, a lot of these demo and rebuilds are people that come in and flip, they're focused just on the building envelope, and normally landscaping is, you know, the last thought. There's not a lot of design of how the water's going to be handled. They want to think about, how big of a house can I build? And those are the projects that, once it's constructed and then it comes to you for an after-the-fact provision, there's not a lot to do. I mean, every square inch is typically built on that can be, and where do you infiltrate the water? And a good amount of your parcels have ledge or wetlands. And so from, from staff's perspective, the proposal to lower the triggers for site plan review comes from a place of saying, look, you've got this gap of projects that are potentially impactful to public safety or to DPW resources, and they're not impactful to public safety or to DPW resources, and they're not getting the benefit of a before-construction review of the design." We're not taking a position as to whether we want it or not, we're saying, "Prior to start building it, let's talk about your design to make sure that you're not impacting the neighbors, that you're not impacting the town." Typically, these demo and reconstruction projects are sizable investments for the residents and it's enlightening for staff to see that there's not a lot of consideration about the whole drainage, you know, runoff, you know, process. So I find this very interesting as far as a plan to show you that it's spread throughout town. I did pass out to you some speaking points from last year. These smaller construction projects are not subject to any review beyond building permit. I will tell you that there's one that's currently in front of us now for a vacant property that's approximately 22,000 square feet. And they're going to alter the entire thing, it's in an established neighborhood, and I'm currently questioning whether or not it triggers site plan review. We're working on that. They may find a workaround where they can get behind the current thresholds, but that's a gap. Because now we have a vacant piece of land that's going to have a septic system, a garage, and a house built on it. And a building permit will be issued. There won't be site plan review, so there won't be erosion control, there won't be drainage review. In addition, it could have started construction without even the police chief knowing about it, and typically, he would require police details, that type of thing. So it's a gap. I ended up with this one I'm talking about now, I called up the chief today and said, "Heads up, you know, forwarded to you, if it doesn't trigger site plan review, you may want to connect with the building department to make sure any, you know, police details are required." But it's interesting because that could potentially be one of those smaller projects that not by any malicious intent, does impact town services without any oversight. So that's the first map that I have for you. And then the second map that I gave each one of you a copy of, and I apologize because I don't actually have the quantification of how many by square feet, but there's another map laid out for you that's parcel area and square feet. And this one, I think, is interesting because we broke it up, this was from last year, if it looks familiar. And we're showing you the different sized parcels, so you can really start, as this conversation progresses, think about what might make sense if you choose to change these triggers for site plan review, what makes sense? Does it make sense to go down to 10,000 square feet for the flat parcels, but lower the percentage for the slopes so that, you know, you capture more? And how many would then the gap in permitting be? Right? Like, what's an acceptable amount of projects that could potentially not be reviewed? So I will get for you, prior to the next meeting, the count for these, you know, how many parcels are less than 5,000 square feet? How many are between 5,000 and 7,500? So we can kind of start to tease this out a little bit, assuming it's all flat. And then we can talk about topography. But if you look at, you know, the other map that we have that shows, you have steep slopes in Crow Point, but you don't really have other places in town with really steep slopes. There's some steep slopes right down by World's End, we've gotten a few permits in there that would have triggered your slope percentage. But most of the rest of these parcels that are showing on here as under 20,000 square feet, from a quick and dirty analysis from staff, would not trigger your, you know, projects in areas with greater than 10% slope. So these would all be projects that, you know, would not be subject to any kind of oversight. Now, I'm not suggesting, in my opinion, that full-blown site plan review is necessarily indicated for every single project. But what I'm suggesting to you is that, in the interest of protecting the town's resources, police, public safety, DPW, that there should be some kind of pause where a project comes in and it's looked at. You know, are you proposing erosion controls? Do you have slopes? What's proposed? And whether it's as simple as some kind of limited site plan review, where you just look at erosion control and stormwater, or maybe it's just a simple, tell the town what you're doing. Someone, if someone had an acre parcel and they were doing a pool, a patio, and a septic system, and it was flat as a pancake, and they were told, "If you lower the thresholds," and they were told, "I'm sorry, sir, you need site plan review," they could say to staff, "Hey, my parcel's as flat as a pancake, what do you want? I'll do anything you want, I'll put in erosion control here, here's my plan." Right now, if that happened, I'd say, "That's fine, you can apply for a waiver of site plan review." And they'd come to you and explain it to you and you'd decide if you chose to waive site plan review, or if you required some kind of partial waiver and have your drainage reviewed, that type of thing. So, again, to back up, we're talking about reducing the thresholds that trigger site plan review. Many lots in town are already constrained by size, by ledge, by resources. We brought this up last year and we ended up pulling it out because we felt we needed to think about it some more. And I'm happy to bring it back to you. I do not have an updated letter from DPW superintendent this year, but I did talk to him today and he's been a little busy, but we are going to meet and discuss it some more. I think that the takeaway from these maps, and particularly the green and orange one, the first one, when we talked about this last year, I remember the board was concerned about having a disproportionate impact on North Hingham. But if you look at this map, 39% of your parcels in town are currently not triggering site plan review with a demo and rebuild. And it's not just North Hingham. So I think that this was actually very helpful for me because it proved that you would not just be singling out one part of town. And as opposed to doing like a large house site plan review, I think for me, the difference is, this bylaw change says, "We're concerned about stormwater discharge creating a problem in the public way. We're concerned about erosion and sedimentation getting into our catch basins, causing problems, possibly punitive fines on the town for not managing their resources." Because once the dirt leaves the private property, it goes into DPW's catch basins, they have to maintain those. And if they're found to be discharging into the resource, the town can be fined. So do we manage it before it happens? Or do we pay to have more people go around and clean the catch basins more often? Where do we have that burden? And I would suggest to you that we should have the projects designed properly if and when it may need to be, to make sure there isn't a problem before there is a problem. And we're not saying, "We just want to review large houses." We're saying, "We're concerned about drainage, we're concerned about our resources, and that's the problem we're trying to address." And how are we trying to address it? We're trying to provide a mechanism that at least, when a project is conceived and they come and talk to staff, staff says, "You may trigger this additional permit, go talk to staff." And maybe they'll have to come to the planning board and get a waiver, maybe they'll have to do a limited drainage analysis, like on Howe Street, and show how they're going to infiltrate their roof drains so they don't flood their neighbor. But that review will happen before the house is built, or the structure, not afterwards when you're in a kind of more adversarial situation. So that, to me, is the difference, like, large house review is saying, "Let's talk about your big house." Right? That's a different conversation, for me. I'm not saying it's bad. So I did, in the interest of time, I won't read them all, I did provide for the board speaking points, kind of getting down to the nitty-gritty of this. I did put all of this on the website and I'm happy to discuss this further, I will get you some information from Randy. I know that the chief, part of this, we struggle with this every year, you know, with the water and the drainage and the discharges. So with that, I guess I'll take questions.
Thank you, Mary.
Detailed presentation. Any questions from the board? Karen?
So, and I don't want this question to sound at all that I, like, I don't love what we do, because I do. But with some of the sort of waiver options that you laid out and that kind of stuff, it might mitigate it. But when you look at these maps and you look at these thresholds, the potential for the volume of activity for the planning board to dramatically increase strikes me as very real, right? I mean, the number of parcels, right? So we would, and I do think we still care about drainage and runoff and impact to the neighbors already. So I would encourage us to think about what, how to formalize some of those mechanisms for those smaller projects that might be borderline. I mean, dropping from 20,000 to 5,000 is a big number, we could see that number go up quite a bit, that's my only initial concern about it. We're potentially affecting a lot of people with this.
Well, I think there's maybe eight or 10 demo and rebuilds a year. So I encourage you to think about, when you're thinking about this, you know, it's unlikely that every single one of these parcels that's highlighted is going to be in play in any single year. But I would also just say that...
And I'm not, by asking a question, I'm not suggesting it's not something we should consider doing, I just think we need to think about what some of those other mechanisms that you alluded to are available to folks.
So one thing we talked about last year that we had language drafted for, that we could bring back forward, was kind of a limited site plan review from, you know, you already put in on page 10, under section C, the ability for you, by a majority vote of the board, to establish an administrative process for site plan review of certain applications. And if it's a matter of thinking about what types of site plan review, you know, if it's a matter of looking at the erosion control installation perhaps, maybe that's something that you delegate to staff to deal with. Maybe the board might want to consider establishing parameters for limited site plan review and narrow the scope of site plan review to simply erosion control, stormwater, and impacts on neighbors. And really say to the applicants, "Provide us X, Y, and Z," and streamline it instead of, you know, having to constantly waive things. So you do have a couple mechanisms, it's just where you want to go with it.
One of the things that I see is a convergence and a synergy here between looking at this from a zoning perspective in terms of dimensional control and looking at it in terms of site plan review is that, one of the aspects that kind of triggered the interest in doing a dimensional review was how much of the site is actually covered by impervious building, development, paving, you know, and how much of the site is open relative to recharge? And so there's, on one side of the coin, there's a, there's a, an issue of coverage relative to massing and density, but it also is essentially totally interrelated with how much can the infrastructure, both onsite and also the infrastructure that supports these sites, how much can it handle and balance? And I think what's intriguing to me about these maps is it shows that even though the potential slope areas of the town are limited somewhat, the lot coverage area is relatively evenly distributed in terms of, if we have too much impervious development on a particular site, there's only so much that the infrastructure can handle, there's really only so much that the natural recharge can handle. And it seems to me it's about balance on both sides. So it could be that this, I like the idea of the proactive aspect of a limited site plan review, because you're coming in before it all is put together. And I think you can anticipate in a proactive way some of these issues that are important more than just in and of the zoning and, you know, a lot of this is, what we're dealing with is a much better understanding of sustainability. You know, how do we stress the infrastructure? How do we stress the environment with what we're doing and how do we balance it? This is one way of looking at that from our purview. The other way is to look at it is the zoning, which is more the purview of the permit from the building department. So I see there's a lot of synergy between the two and there's a lot of good information that exists in some of this distillation of these computer maps, because it really graphically kind of gives you a good, even distribution.
This proposal is not taking any position on how big a structure is built. We're not trying to limit the residential use of a property by saying, "You can only cover this much." We're just saying that prior to putting the shovel in the ground, let us take a look at the design to make sure you're not affecting your neighbors and you're not creating a cost burden on the town. And then, you know, I think that actually ultimately protects the, you know, individual who's building the home, who may not even be thinking about those things because they're thinking about, you know, "Where do I put the playroom?" Kind of thing. So...
So, I mean, I was just going to add that, you know, I was the one last year who raised the issue of the disproportionate impact on North Hingham, worried about just the slopes of that part of town. So the map is helpful, so thank you for that. And I just think with this, with this proposal, I'd like to see a waiver process that is administratively very easy for an applicant homeowner to obtain and as little cost on that person who doesn't need it as possible, so that we can really get to the problem areas, right? And we've seen a lot of those over the years and they've been brought to our attention by neighbors and abutters who've said, "Hey, you know, this developer came in, they built this house, and no infrastructure to support what they did over there, and now I'm getting, anytime it rains, you know, soil and so it just ends up in our drain and causing problems all over the street." And they've turned to us and said, "What do we do?" Well, this is kind of, this is what we do, we try to handle it proactively. So I'd like to see a way that we can really use this to get at the problem areas. And also to Gordon's point too, is we don't want to overburden our agenda with these type of items. So, you know, going forward, we can probably work with an administrative waiver process where maybe staff can look at some of these things and quickly move them along and the board deals with the bigger issues. But those are my initial comments.
Because when, you know, when folks have come in, because we, you know, we discuss waivers of site plan review now, but generally, when people come in after the fact, for not having done what they should have done, we're generally reluctant to provide waivers in that circumstance, we'd want to go through site plan review. So you're, the potential that you're going to see a lot more people that would have no idea if they're disturbing 5,000 square feet or 5100 square feet, that they need to do this, we could be doing a lot more of these after the fact, potentially, absent a robust education program, shall we say, right? And so in those circumstances, I still think we're going to be reluctant to issue the waivers, right? We're going to want to, you know, if it's after the fact, and that's traditionally how we've worked with folks that have come in not having complied on the front end, then we'll, we will want to be consistent, I think, in that. So, but I agree with you on, you know, if a waiver process is, they're able to avail themselves of that and it's clear enough, then...
I think the key would be to, I mean, there's some properties that, you know, most of us staff who deal with this all the time, if someone said, "Hey, come out to my property," you could go out there, we could tell pretty quick, "Oh, this one's not going to be a problem, they just have to put in some erosion control and, you know, infiltrate your dos bouts and these other parcels you'd go out to." And you'd say, you know, "You really need to have, maybe not a full drainage analysis, but perhaps, you know, some drainage review to make sure that there's capacity and connections" and that type of thing. You can pretty quickly figure out what level of analysis is needed for a proposal, where it gets difficult is when it's after the fact and you're trying to fix it and everything's been built and I can't put it here, and, "Oh, there's ledge here and now you have to let me do this." You know, it does get challenging. So hopefully, if this does change, we do need to do some more education... more education and, and maybe even on the building permit, you know, how they have a list of disclaimers on the online building permits, you know, do some more of that. I will say that some of the developers in town probably are aware of this, but it's one of these things that, like, people wait till we intervene sometimes.
I can't imagine.
[laughing]
Any, any comments or questions from, like Dave?
I got some, yeah, there's some people on the road. I support this. I think it's a great idea. As some of you know, I have some interaction with this part of the bylaw. I might make a couple suggestions as, along in keeping with that. One would be to think about a definition of land disturbance. You know, when I read this, I wasn't clear on what a land disturbance was. And I don't know if that opens a whole other can of worms, but it's something you guys might want to consider. Second, as it relates to 4B, 6B, I might, again, it's a small change, but if you're in there monkeying and got the hood up on that section, all projects that one, I might add the word, the word would, or intends, or intends to create, as opposed to all projects that create a land disturbance, all projects that would create a land disturbance, to try to speak to your pre as opposed to post problem, and to call someone's attention who's reading this to say, oh, might I create that issue? And then the one last thing I was curious about is, again, leaving aside the question of a definition of land disturbance, alteration of drainage patterns. I wondered if, again, in the interest of clarity for someone who's not steeped in this as they read it, if you added a clause after that, something to the extent of, and would reasonably be expected to increase runoff, or something that, alteration of drainage pattern sounds technical to me. Reasonably expected to increase runoff on neighboring properties or on the road, might just add some specificity to give someone something to hang their hat on. Thanks.
Good points. Thank you.
Just for the board, so the way that land disturbance is basically interpreted now is shovel in the ground. You're stripping off that ground cover, and you're doing a massive landscaping job, that's land disturbance. You're grading. The project I'm talking about now, it's about a 22,000 square foot parcel, building a house, a garage, and a septic system. It's reasonable to presume, or at least look at the fact that that property is probably going to be cleared, property line to property line. It may not now, in an effort to stay below your trigger, because staff has intervened, but, so land disturbance, shovel in the ground, taking away that ground cover, that's how it's been. So we can look at clarifying it, but just so you know, that's how it's been interpreted so far.
Thank you.
And that, I'm sorry, just to clarify, I'm assuming that's a permanent disturbance, right? Because if you're, if you're, if you're turning over the dirt, but then mulching big portions of it and that kind of thing, that's, that's still a land disturbance.
Yeah. Because the, the property is then subject to higher erosional impacts, right? If it rains and that ground cover's disturbed, people don't rip up their lawn and then put down the mulch the next day, right? So we're looking at erosion control and stormwater. So if you have a construction project that's going to be ongoing, we want to make sure the silt fence is up until you, you know, put down the mulch and it's stable, right?
Chief, how are you?
Good evening. Chief Olson. I supported this amendment last year, and I still support it for the same reasons. We go around town, and sometimes I've seen houses being built in areas that I said, like, how can they build a house there? We know from living in town all these years, we know where wet areas are and wet areas aren't, where the water flows off. And often, you know, those are areas, so I've been to these boards long enough to know, and deeply concerned about water runoff during projects, where it's going to go, and how it's going to affect the surrounding neighbors. And we've seen some errors that have gone by in the area of Beale Street, which we know is always a wet area. Some people have gone in and re-altered, done some beautiful landscaping, and of course, they put in French drains and dump it off to the side of the yard, and it flows out into the water. And for all the wet times, it's every time you go by, that small puddle is now stretched out the whole length, half the length of Beale Street. It's just, and during the wintertime, this is critical, that we can't have these kind of things. So little projects, there was another big project where we know on, a house was rebuilt up on Sharp Street, which is another bad, not Sharp Street, but Abington Street, which is another bad area. The house was sold, somebody else bought it, the wet weather came. We have flooding on Abington Street because of stuff that was put in that probably should have never been put in. But it was good, it made it look good and dry for the sale. So these are things that we're talking about. And also during construction, I've worked with projects and complaints from the neighbors where the neighbors are out parking on, the building people are parking on the street, when you say, well, hey, you know, we asked you to park in the project, and they tell you, well, we can't because there's too muddy in there. So, you know, we're constantly going to houses for machine, for noise complaints, dumpster complaints, lumber deliveries, constructions, muddy streets that aren't being cleaned up, block sidewalks. And some of these projects go on, and I just don't see, the land that's available in Hingham to be built on is getting, it's not prime land. It's land that's been bypassed all these years because it was too expensive to be built on for lots of different reasons. And now where people want to come in and build there, or they want to make alterations, I think there needs to be some process in there that, that says, like, hey, let's take a look at this. Whether it has to be a full board review, a partial board, but I know we'd cut down on our calls responding to solve these neighborhood issues that are created by construction, if maybe somebody had looked into this, and we could have solved the problems in advance. So, you know, I just think that that's something that should be in the process somehow, because we talked about houses being ripped down now. Most of the time when a house is ripped down in Hingham, I don't even know about it. But yet, you know, you'll see the streets lined with trucks waiting for it to be ripped down. And then, you know, and I think it's, I was surprised by the number of houses that are torn down for different reasons. So it's, it's something that we do need to improve on, and I think we sort of owe it to the residents that are in these areas of the building permits to at least have some sort of a process that gives them some protection, besides, before we just sign off on a permit to build the house. And if it comes from your board or some other incorporation, I think something needs to be there, because that would help us maybe address some of these problems before it becomes too late. Thank you. But I'll also get something in for the 2.0. This is 1.0.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Tom Patschip, Street. On the waiver issue, you know, I, from what I understand and my own experience in observing this type of situation, it's more that you want people to be proactive, to do something about it, that what they have to do is not a big deal, you know, a lot of times just putting in a silt fence or something like this. So basically, if we're talking about a waiver situation, and if this is going to cover a lot more properties potentially than what's now, it would seem to be that the fee should be a, you know, somewhat minimal fee. Basically, people, if you're expanding the scope, but people are going to be affected by this, and it's really just sort of to try to catch it in advance to prevent this from manifesting itself, then you don't, you know, I would hope that the fee would be a small fee for that. And the same thing for a waiver, even if they have to, even if you guys decide to go with the site plan review itself. In terms of the definition issue, it's always good so that people understand what you're talking about. One, one of the things that I've always, and Mary can speak to this, but the, the part about the slopes, land disturbance in, in areas of, with slopes greater than 10%, is whether or not the disturbance is in that 10%, is in the slope of 10%? Or is it, you know, are we talking about any part of the lot that has a slope of 10%, even if you're not creating a disturbance in that portion of it? Can you answer that for me, Mary?
So the interpretation presently, but that could be clarified, is that in the area that's being disturbed, is a portion of that area being disturbed, a 10% slope? So of that 2,500 square feet, is a portion of that slopes in excess of 10%. And that's how it's been interpreted, but it certainly could bear some clarification.
Well, by way of example, Billy and I sort of are in the same situation, where Billy's, his house is where, essentially up top, it's flat, and then it slopes down. And the same thing, my house, basically out front, it slopes down, and off to the side, it slopes down. But it's, you know, it's, it's actually not an area that you probably would do anything anyways. But, so for example, if Billy wanted to put an addition on the back of his house, where it's relatively flat, even though his front yard goes straight down, is this going, and I hate to use you as an example, but that's one that came to my head, but is he going to have, is that, is that going to trigger this? So he's-
It's on the threshold.
Well, okay, so for example, I'm telling, I'm talking about the slope.
Not for the 10% slope. In that example, not for the slope.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, get that clear. Thank you.
But yes, clarification's good.
Anyone else? All right. Moving on to the next proposed change to the zoning bylaw is section 3-G, downtown Hingham Mobile A District. The intent of this article is to modify the provisions of section 3-G and make minor corrections to clarify the requirements for the first-floor commercial use regarding location, and the extent of the building footprint that must be dedicated to commercial use, and clarify the location of dwelling units within a commercial less residential building with multiple ground floors, or act on anything related thereto. So Mary, do you want to discuss this a little bit as well?
Sure. So again, this is kind of fine tuning and clarification. We did work on this section last year with roof decks primarily. So item one that's proposed in the article is really just wordsmithing, changing the word become to becoming. So I see that as clear, you know, just clarification. Item two, we're changing the words street level story to ground floor, and that kind of is a cleanup after last year, where you use ground floor, and it's trying to be consistent with language that you changed within that section. And we just missed that one last year. So item three gets to kind of the impetus for this article. And the board has had a lot of, a lot of discussion about what does this provision mean? And the ZBA really is compelled to interpret it, but you have seen as the market's been becoming more favorable, more of these mixed-use commercial residential developments. And initially, this language was drafted with the intent of having ground floor retail for pedestrian, and then allowing some residential above. And you did put a proviso that parking was an acceptable ground floor use. In practice, what's happening now is that the money is in the residential. There's really no incentive to do commercial. So if you allowed purely residential downtown, you would have no downtown, right? So the money that is to be made in this residential structure is really driving the massing of these buildings. And, and the parcels are very small, so unless someone does an assemblage, you're going to have buildings that are tall, that are covering most of the property, and a good deal of that residential parking. Right now, the bylaw says your residential parking has to be onsite, your commercial parking, you can get a waiver and have it in the commercial parking lot. So depending on the density of your residential units, you have to have a lot of parking. And it's, you've seen a couple now where they're garages. And the need to have that residential parking onsite is constraining the amount of commercial. So it's not a commercial project with some, you know, a couple apartments above for people who live downtown. It's really a residential building, and we'll put in a little bit of commercial so that we can come in under this section of the bylaw. And perhaps that hasn't been the intent of the applicants, but that's kind of how it's been feeling, right? The commercial, you know, what's driving this application? And so you wanted to really try to clarify, how much commercial should there be, and where should it be? So you're proposing to delete the existing text in its entirety, and to say for the commercial use, quote, "A commercial use shall be located at the ground floor, facing the streets on which the parcel has frontage, or facing the Station Street parking lot. The commercial use must include not less than 80% of the linear width of the structure facing the street, and must comprise not less than 80% of the footprint of the structure." Now, constraining the linear frontage, that's basically saying, okay, the only thing that you can have except for, aside from commercials, may be the entrance to a parking garage, you know, depending on how big your lot is. 80% of the footprint, depending on what the board's intent is, that number may need to come down a little bit. We understand that may not be reasonable to, from the perspective of facilitating residential development. If it's on a really small lot, that could be burdensome. You might not be able to get enough parking to have any residential. But we figured that, we staff figured that we'd start the discussion with these percentages. You can always make the numbers smaller, but you could never make them bigger, so we wanted to, you know, approach it that way. I did provide to you, and it's on the website, this. And on the one side, the map is, this is a plan of Station Street, Hingham, Mass. And this was dated February 1, 1954. So this map shows you the current accepted extent of Station Street. And on the backside, or on another sheet, you should have, in 1978 town meeting, there's an arrow where it says, affirmative motion to Mr. Daley, there was a request to lay out the remainder of Station Street, and it failed. So although we may think that Station Street is longer than it is, it really, some of those units, so if you think about North Street, the buildings that particularly are between North Street and Station Street with the topography change, once you go down, one, two, two lots, and then there's the alleyway, and one more building, the rest of those buildings, Station Street isn't accepted. So they don't actually have a street, an accepted street on both sides. They have a street and North Street, and then there's a parking lot. And so why is that important? That's why in this section, the language I just read to you, it says, when you're trying to say, how much commercial should there be, and where should it be, currently, you have some buildings that, do you want commercial on both the North Street side and the Station Street side, as, if those get redeveloped, you know, and you may. And that's why we put in the language, or facing the Station Street parking lot, because otherwise, that, that would be a loophole for you. So that, that is the impetus of that section. And then as you think about, still stay with that topography change between North Street and Station Street. And that gets to item four. So item four talks about where should the residential units be located. And we're proposing language that says dwelling units shall be located above the ground floor. No dwelling unit shall be permitted below the ground floor. In the event of a building with multiple ground floors, the residential use shall be above the higher of the two ground floors. So if you're thinking about the Station Street, North Street topography, obviously, the residential use on the stations, on the North Street side would start higher. Now, that's in there for discussion. Ultimately, you may find it may not be practical, and that language needs to be adjusted. But we wanted to just recognize the fact that on some of these locations in town, you may have commercial here and commercial here, and the residential on, say, the Station Street side of the lot may actually start and be, you know, adjacent to a commercial use on the North Street side. And what does that mean for you? Does it matter? And we wanted to call that out there and really have some discussion around that. So those are really the two kind of changes, to talk about how much commercial and where should it be, and what makes sense, and, and then to talk about where does this residential go? The final item, item five, is just, again, changing ground level and using ground floor, because we want to just try to have consistent verbiage. And so that's the substance of that one.
Thank you, Mary. Any questions?
Yeah, I had a couple. I think that when I look at the context of a couple of recently, recent applications, and some of the things we saw, I think on Central Street- and some of the things we saw, I think on Central Street, we had a situation which might have been the genesis of this in some respects, that we had a very limited amount of commercial. It was kind of on the side, next to the residential neighborhood, but it wasn't really face-front on the street, so the retail use was not really, it wasn't a mixed use in the sense that the, in terms of the focus of the, of the commercial, it was kind of hidden. What I, I'm getting to on Item 3, I'm trying to figure out one of the other aspects here is shouldn't the commercial be a requirement, that the commercial be at the sidewalk? In other words, the commercial facing either the parking lot or North Street doesn't say that the commercial can be in the back, and really isn't the intent of the mixed use to have the, the commercial primary or peremptory, you know, in other words, it's right on the sidewalk, and not a residential use in front of the commercial and then the commercial on the side of the building. You know, given the configuration of Station and North, I can see where there might be some, a little bit different than looking just at North Street where you have the front of the building on the sidewalk and it's linear, just one face. It seems to me the intent in the overlay district was the mixed use, it was the residences over the store creating a day and nighttime use, and not just a daytime use. And so I think that reinforcing the commercial as the primary element at grade, you know, right now, the parking and the access in some of these projects has been the primary entrance, and the commercial's been a sidebar with the residential on the top, the residential taking up the greater part of the massing of the building. So I guess, and I like the idea of the balance created here, I just think that maybe we should be more specific about the relationship of the commercial to the sidewalk. It should be more face-front on the building and not secondary. That would be all I would add here.
Good point. Kevin?
And this might only be a subset of the Central Street application we had, but how many commercial projects are we seeing where they're adding parking? Because you might want to encourage less than 80% of the footprint of the structure to be commercial, if some of these, it's parking spot to access the commercial space. And maybe the 80/20 number just needs to be adjusted downward, so it's 60/40 or something to accommodate that. But maybe, I can't actually think of any other buildings where parking would be added to the structure itself as opposed to be used, and maybe just haven't seen those applications yet, but that was somewhat of an anomaly, at least since I've been on the board, we've seen a project where parking was proposed on-site with a commercial intent and not just a residential, you know, aspect of it. And the Station Street is all residential parking, right, on-site?
Yeah, because they could have asked for a waiver for the commercial, right? I think that was just another function of a kind of a really optimistic proposal.
Absolutely. So I don't, something to think about.
The lifespan of that project was incredibly short, right? You know, for a lot of reasons, but it's still instructive to see what people are motivated to try under the current.
Without having a, some vehicle access for the commercial other than on-street, is there a way to provide, how do we provide for the loading and all the shipping and the dealing and that aspect of the support of the commercial in this when the only in-building vehicle support is for residential?
And the downtown now, and Chief can probably speak to this better than I can, it's on-street.
Everything's on-street.
There's loading zones with restricted times, like it has to be early in the morning, but it is identified as a loading zone and negotiated, and that's just a function of the downtown.
I see them, I see a lot of trucks loading, like Friday mornings. You know, you see Hennessy's loading trucks in front, maybe on South Street for the snog, bringing beer over or stars or things like that. So I, so Friday mornings, you see a lot of those big trucks, but they're identified in loading zones and at certain hours of the day. So that is part and parcel of the ZBA A2 probably, application where they identify times and locations of loading.
Well, and partially with your A3, depending on the application, right? Because under parking, we look at the loading zone. Station Street, you'll remember, they've got loading on-site.
Right.
And same with the, um,
I guess it's part of site plan review.
The North Street one, right? They have some on-site. I think that it just really depends on the assemblage of parcels, right? Is this one parcel being redeveloped, or is it an assemblage? And how much area they have, because they're going to be constrained. They're going to have to go up if they're going to provide it on-site. The building's got to be taller. Now, that Station Street, North Street area, there could be opportunity for taller buildings that still have some parking on the ground out back by Station Street, just because a function of those particular parcels, right? But if you're on the other side of North Street and you're doing assemblage, those are fairly shallow parcels, so you're not going to get commercial parking on-site, right? It's going to be in the Station Street lot.
And I would just add too, I, I think this is, this is an important article because, as you said, Mary, we, you know, and I think it's good that we just, we are prescribing and starting at 80%, because we have seen projects, I can think of three or four that have come in that have tried to circumvent the requirement for the first-floor commercial. Because exactly as you said, the, the money for the developer is more in the residences, but the intent of the overlay district bylaw was clear, and the town wanted to have first-floor commercial. So I think it's important now, we're at the point where we have to prescribe the amount because we have seen three, three projects in my mind that have circumvented that intent. So we'll have to look hard at, is the 80%, is it going to have unintended consequences and hurt smaller, smaller buildings? I don't know, but I think it's a good starting point. And I think Judy's going to add a lot to this discussion as well, because she has a strong knowledge of the, of the downtown area, so.
Yeah, the more commercial you require, the less residential you're going to get. And the residential is where the money is. So that's going to be the balancing act. But the board, you draft bylaws to prescribe what use or form you want, you're not worrying about financial return.
Right. And every project that comes into downtown, now parking is more and more at a premium and becomes more and more difficult, so, but.
So as, as we move forward with this evolution of downtown relative to the mixed-use parameters, with the on-street loading, are we basically changing the shared parking ratios in some degree? Because the residential are taken care of us, you know, in the building, off-street. But as we add mixed-use commercial and we have dedicated loading zones, what does that say for the, do we have to look at that relative to the change of available shared parking spaces?
You mean the on-street commercial?
Yeah, the on-street commercial, because the loading zone is all day, there's not just in the morning.
No, no, there's prescribed hours for the loading for different businesses. I think the ZBA says. I mean, we even have in Anchor Plaza, it, well, we, the town, has said, this is when you can come and do your loading and un-
That's what I was getting at with the, the ZBA prescribes.
So under A2, they do that.
They prescribe the times, right. That's what. Any questions from members of the audience? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion that we continue our discussion of the, of the proposed changes to the zoning bylaw all to February 10th, 2020. Is there a second?
Second.
Need further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thanks, everybody coming tonight. Next item on the agenda is 126 Cushion Street. The board is, the applicant is seeking site plan review in association with a building permit. Project entails demolition of existing structure and construction of a new single-family residence. So I do see, the engineer for the applicant is here. Good to see you. Give us an update of where you, where you've come since you last appealed before the board and be ready to field some questions.
Sure.
And just, and just state your name and position for the record as well. I know that you're a Hingham resident, but.
Jeff Hassett, civil engineer with Morris Engineering. With me is Pat Blair. He is the applicant. So there are, there's a single-family home on the property as well as a detached garage. There are driveways off of both of the roadways. So the last hearing, there was one item request being to provide a landscaping plan. So we've provided that plan. All of the existing trees are shown in green, and the proposed trees are shown in the, the bold black line type. So along Cushion Street, we are, the intent is to plant street trees, they're 35 feet approximately on center, as well as behind the street trees, a combination of a stockade fence and a hedge in order to create some privacy to the busy road being Cushion Street, and also for safety to prevent, say, a child playing in the backyard from getting too close to the street. On Pioneer Road, closer to the intersection, there are three mature trees. Their, the diameters are 12 inches, 16, and 26. The three of those trees will remain. And then when looking at the proposed house from Pioneer Road, along the left side property line, there's a wooded area about 20 to 30 feet wide, which will remain wooded, and we located all of the mature trees in that wooded area. And at the rear of the property, there's an existing stockade fence as well as a number of, of trees. All of those trees will remain with the addition of a couple more trees to fill in, to fill in the area. Thank you.
Any, any questions from the board?
No, that's all we asked them to do.
Yeah, that's all we asked. Yeah. Go ahead.
Nope.
Yeah, well, thanks for doing that. That, we were, I think there was concern about how many trees were going to be removed and the size and caliber of those trees, so thanks for identifying that.
And adding a couple to the, to the house in back, I guess I would say, is, is great because there is a fair amount of it.
Yeah, exactly, because it's a little bit open there.
All right. Any, any questions about, any questions relative to site plan review with this project?
The only question I had is, are the grades and the drainage hasn't changed at all from our last meeting?
No, they haven't.
Isn't it? Okay. And so any runoff on this is contained, I'm thinking driveway runoff, is there a catch basin or something that's?
Yeah, there'll be a trench drain across.
Trench drain across at elevation 59.
Tying to a stone trench next to the driveway.
Were there, Mayor, are there any concerns that should be raised by any others?
Police chief did write a letter for you.
If you'd like to, Chief. I mean, I have the letter here, but yeah, please.
Fire did write a letter to him.
Thank you.
Good evening. Historically, if I remember correctly, this house has always, pretty been existence from, I think, a family of four. It's sort of an underused-sized lot. I think my concerns is if, depending on how we're changing the use and where we're going to do things, it's a, Cushion Street has become a road where traffic has really started to increase. It's a bypass road, it's a connector road. It's being, that area is being more used as connection over to Ward Street or to Derby Shop, so the traffic patterns have definitely changed over the years. They've become increasingly heavier, and I think as we move forward into the future, it's just going to get worse. I hate to say that, but. The intersection of Pioneer Road and Cushion Street sits in a hollow. There's a hill on each side of it. The existing driveway for that location sits on the Ward Street side of Cushion Street. It's very difficult to come out of Pioneer Road and make a left-hand turn. It's dangerous. Most people will probably try to go right and avoid head up to Main Street. I think that when I was looking at the plans, it looks like they want to use the Cushion Street driveway for their construction thing, and I really am uncomfortable with that. I think they'd be better off going around the corner and using Pioneer Road. During the excavation, demolition, and other, other material will be coming in and out. There's some, a lot of vari, work is going to be done, I think, in the area of readjusting the height differences and changing locations in the lot, which means a lot of trucks coming in and out. This is always seems to be a problem, that it gets out onto the streets and stays there for days on end. It gets packed down, it gets very difficult to remove. I don't really want that out on Cushion Street. My other concern is there is that I think there has to be some coordination with the school department. There is a school bus stop there, and there's lots of parents there in the morning because no kids are allowed to walk and stay at a site without being a car present. When you'll see five, you'll see 10 cars at a big waiting with their kids at the, at the bus stop. Not that I blame them, but, and I think during some of the construction stuff, I think we need to sort of establish a route that the trucks are going to be using, that's the safest route possible, sticking to the main roads so that they're not coming out and making the left. They should be heading up to Main Street and follow 228 out instead of cutting through the residential areas. On-site storage is a concern because if we're putting stuff on there that's blocking the view of a poor intersection, we need to make sure that they're not putting piles in that area or parking vehicles. And again, one of the issues of parking vehicles, where are we going to park the vehicles? Is it safe to have vehicles moving around? I know some of the stuff, I would require detail officers to be during some of the heavy movement of vehicles or, you know, trucking in and out, so. Again, these are some of the little things we were just talking about earlier that I think we need to take into account and manage them the best we can before it becomes an issue. But I am concerned about the school bus. I never talked to, a chance to talk to them, but if you go by there in the morning, it's a sizable school bus stop, and we need to sort of operate around those school bus stops the best we can. I think it's doable, just needs to be looked into.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mayor, did you incorporate the chief's concerns, comment into this? Okay, so they're all going to be.
I did incorporate them. For example, under C, I proposed a condition, basically using his language, saying a traffic plan must be submitted to show plans for vehicle parking and truck routes, and must include input from the school transportation department. On other projects where we've done like a traffic plan, like the Downer Estates subdivision, we require a pre-construction meeting. So typically, for something with a condition like this, like with Downer Estates, we had, you know, DPW, in that case, fire, police, all there, and we talked about the plan. So we could certainly include the school department with our pre-construction meeting, if not, talk to them ahead. We can facilitate that discussion, it's just a matter of making everyone aware, you know, of what's going on, all the different activity there, with safety being our priority. But to answer your question, any outstanding comments from Mr. Brennan, police chief, fire chief, or staff have been incorporated here in a draft for you to consider if you're ready to move forward.
So, and so based on the chief's comments, I would offer that condition that we do include the school department, transportation contact in your pre-construction meeting to address the issues with the bus stop. All right. Any, any questions, concerns from the board? Feel like we're ready to vote? Okay. All right, I'm going to go through the site plan review criteria, starting with A all the way through J. If any members of the board would like to offer additional findings or additional conditions, please let me know, and we'll do so. We'll take them up one by one as we go through the process. Site plan review criteria, A, the protection of abutting properties against detrimental usage by provision for surface water drainage, fire hydrant locations, sound and site buffers, and preservation of views, light, and air, and protection of abutting properties from negative impacts from artificial outdoor sight lighting. I'd offer the following findings. The fire marshal reviewed the project, provided comments, and the landscape plan was submitted. I'd offer no conditions under A. Under site plan review criteria B, convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site and non-adjacent streets, the location of driveway openings in relation to traffic or to adjacent streets, taking accounts of grades, site distances and distances between such driveway entrances, exits in the nearest existing street or highway intersections, sufficiency of access for service, utility, and emergency vehicles. I'd offer the following findings. Any work in the public way requires a street opening permit from DPW. Police details may be required at the discretion of the police chief. The sight line is not good at this intersection, and there is a bus stop there, as noted by the chief tonight. The structure will now face and have the driveway on Pioneer Road. The address should be a Pioneer Road address, and the fire marshal, Fire Marshal Denapoli provided comments dated January 3, 2020. I'd offer the following conditions. Applicant must secure a street opening permit from DPW prior to a pre-construction meeting. The existing Cushion Street entrance should not be used, and all traffic should flow into the site from Pioneer Road. The street address shall be changed to have a Pioneer Road address. Per the police chief and the fire marshal, the standard practice is to have the address dictated by the front door of the residence. During the excavation, demolition, or other periods of heavy traffic, police details will be required to assist with safe, with safe traffic movement. An on-site storage of construction materials, including dirt piles, shall not obstruct sightlines of vehicles turning onto Cushion Street.
I guess the only thing I would add on the conditions is, in terms of the, the vehicles leaving, is, is- vehicles leaving, it's, it's, it's containing debris within the site boundary, so I'm just thinking of vehicles leaving the site. Is there a way to clean the vehicles, whether the, any of the debris isn't on Pioneer Road or Cushing Street, or is there some kind of a washing mechanism or crush stone for the wheels and things?
Yeah, we provide a stabilized construction entrance.
That would, that would help keep both streets clean.
Great. You said a stabilized construction entrance?
Yes.
So I would add that to the condition.
Okay.
Do you want to put it under that one, or under G with the? I mean, we do have a construction entrance.
We would put a stabilized construction entrance.
So you're going to put the filter fabric underneath it?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, G is stormwater, it seems to me this is more.
So we'll say.
The applicant provide a stabilized construction.
Applicant shall revise plan to show an enhanced stabilized tracking pad?
Uh, it's a stabilized construction entrance.
Jeff, does that work? Applicants shall revise the plan to show an enhanced stabilized construction entrance with updated detail.
All right.
Is that good, Gary?
Yep. Criteria C, adequacy of the arrangement of parking, loading spaces, and traffic patterns in relation to the proposed uses of the premises, compliance with the off-street parking requirements of this bylaw. I'd offer the following findings. Police Chief Olson provided comments dated January second, 2020, with traffic and public safety concerns identified. A traffic plan is required to show plans for vehicle, parking, and truck routes, and must include input from the school transportation department. I'd offer the following conditions. All large truck traffic leaving the site will exit right and flow onto, uh, Main Street. A traffic plat, a traffic plan must be submitted to show plans for vehicle parking and truck routes, and must include input from the school transportation department.
You just might want to modify that to say exit right, um, onto Cushing Street, because now the entrance is on Pioneer, you don't want them going down Pioneer, right?
That's a good point.
Onto Cushing.
Towards Main Street, or something along those lines.
To be Cushing.
You don't want them going down Pioneer. That's not what you're looking to do anyway, but you definitely don't want to be doing that.
Onto Cushing Street.
I'm relieved. I just had a clarification question. On the site plan, we still have the existing driveway. Is that for the construction, temporary parking for the construction trucks, or would all the vehicles come in off Pioneer?
All the vehicles are from Pioneer now.
Pioneer, so there wouldn't be any access on Cushing from even construction vehicles?
No.
People parking trucks and stuff?
Okay. Okay. Criteria D, adequacy of open space and setbacks, including the adequacy of landscaping of such areas. I'd offer the following finding. A landscape plan will submit additional trees. Our proposal along Cushing Street, the DPW would like new trees to be planted at least ten, uh, ten in, ten, ten feet from existing sidewalk to allow room for growth without damaging walk. I'd offer the following condition. Trees shall be planted not less than ten feet from back of sidewalk and private property. Criteria E is not applicable. Criteria F, the prevention and mitigation of adverse impacts on the town's resources, including without limitation water supply, wastewater facilities, energy and public works, and public safety resources. I'd offer no findings, but I would offer the following condition. Pioneer Road and Cushing Street will be kept clean of any dirt and debris from vehicles entering into and exiting the site. Criteria G, the assurance of positive stormwater drainage, the snow melt, snow melt runoff from buildings, driveways, and from all parking and loading areas on the site, and prevention of erosion, sedimentation, and stormwater pollution and management problems through site design and erosion controls in accordance with the most current versions of the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protections Stormwater Management Policy and Standards, including the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook, the Massachusetts Erosion and Sediment Control Guidelines, and, if applicable, additional requirements under the Town of Hingham MS4 Permit for Project that disturb more than one acre and discharge the town's municipal stormwater, stormwater system. I'd offer the following findings. The peer review engineer states in his memo of December sixteenth, 2019, that the proposed work, as shown on the site plan dated December thirteenth, 2019, were resolved in a site that is in compliance with the Massachusetts Stormwater Standards. Further, that the erosion controls shown and detailed on the plan will adequately mitigate potential erosion of the site during construction activities. Also, an, an operations and maintenance plan was submitted and revised per the peer review engineer comments. It still needs a title page or header noting the names of the project it is for, the date written, and the person who wrote it. Also, limits of clearing shall be marked with orange construction fence. I'd offer the following conditions. A pre-construction review meeting with inspection of the erosion control installation and marked limits of clearing shall be required as a condition of approval for all projects. The pre-construction meeting shall include the police chief or his designee, the director of community planning, and the DPW superintendent or his designee at a minimum, and will be coordinated by the director of community planning. Inspection shall be required during construction and prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy of all elements of the project related to or affecting erosion control during construction and the approved drainage and stormwater system installed for the project. Upon project completion, an as-built plan must be submitted to the building commissioner prior to the issuance of a, of a certificate of occupancy, and in no event later than two years after the completion of construction. In addition to such other requirements as are imposed by the building commissioner, the as-built plan must demonstrate substantial conformance with the stormwater system design and performance standards of the approved project plans. A revised O and M plan shall be provided with a formal title page noting project name, date written, and author. Post-construction, uh, post-construction, the drainage system is required to have ongoing maintenance in accordance with the post-construction operation and maintenance requirement.
Billy, just want to add the, um, I think you mentioned this earlier, but the first bullet, you want to add someone from the school committee or school boards or?
School department transportation.
So it'd be the.
For the pre-construction meeting.
Put that first bullet up there.
Yeah, good point. All right. Uh, criteria H, assurance that appropriate best management practices have been incorporated to minimize the amount of disturbed areas and protect natural resources. Stabilize sites, stabilize sites when projects are complete or operations have temporarily ceased. Protect slopes on the construction site. Protect storm drain inlets and armor, and armor, all newly constructed outlets. Install perimeter controls at the site. Stabilize construction site entrances and exits to prevent off-site tracking of material and to provide for regular inspection of stormwater controls at consistent intervals. I'd offer the following finding. Project with peer reviewed and the appropriate erosion controls are proposed. Criteria I, protection of natural historic features, including minimizing the volume of cut and fill, number of removed trees of six inches caliper or larger, removal of stone walls, and the obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible location. I'd offer the following finding. Existing single-family house being demolished and replaced with a single-family house, no associated conditions, and criteria J is not applicable. With that, then I'd make a motion to approve, um, to approve site plan review for raise and rebuild one-twenty-six Cushing Street, assessive map one-four-five lot twenty-one, Hingham, Massachusetts. As shown on the site plan dated twelve-sixteen nineteen and the landscape plan dated twelve-thirty-one nineteen, prepared for Harborview Development LLC, prepared by Morse Engineering, as presented at the hearings, with the findings and subject to the conditions as discussed tonight. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a need to further discussion?
I just only want to suggest to add, uh, in the conditions, should we, on INJ, just reference the addition of the, uh, new trees, the screening trees in the site plan, the landscape plan? Protection of natural features.
So we can say that the applicant has submitted a landscaping plan?
Yeah, I was just thinking we'd just add on INJ that the applicant has submitted a landscaping plan to address these.
About, um, a finding that the applicant has, would it be a finding, Mary? The applicant has, has presented a landscaping plan, uh, which, which will be adopted as part of the permit?
Um, we could make a finding, we call it out as part of the motion, so, as part of the plan reference, but I'm happy to add a finding if you like.
Yeah, it's just that the, uh, the applicant has submitted a landscaping plan to address the minimizing the, uh.
So under I, a finding, applicant.
Has submitted a landscape plan addressing the, uh, screening and the provision of, uh, street and, uh, site trees.
Detailing new trees to be planted?
Yeah, that's good, new trees we planted. Yeah, okay. Any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Last two items on the agenda, we just have administrative reports, so, Mary, if you.
So a couple really quick, zip-zip, quick, quick. Um, I did not get any comments from any of the board members on the two habitat units being proposed on Whiting Street. I did put in your packet, I provided initial comments on behalf of staff to the ZBA. Um, so those were just in your packet, just kind of as an advisory. That hearing does open tomorrow night, um, and it will be on TV, and I didn't have any major comments, I just basically made comments that were typical discussion points that the board has anyway. The peer reviews are not in yet for that project, so, um, stay tuned, it's just getting started. I did provide in your packet, the Board of Health is updating their, um, final bedroom guidelines, and just as an FYI, I provided it for you. If you have any questions about this or you want to talk about it, contact Sue Sarni directly. Um, I don't, there's really nothing here that impacts us, um, but it's an advisory, so that hearing process is getting going, and if you're interested, you should participate. Um, and then finally, I just want to put on your radar that, um, we could possibly be in a position with kind of a last-minute zoning article. So one of those floodplain panel changes that we thought was going to happen last year that never came in, and we delayed it. We did get an email December seventeenth, I think the first email we got on it was, yeah, December seventeenth, from DCR saying, hey, great news, we modified your floodplain panels and you got to change your regs. Um, and so, what does that mean for us? Lonnie and I are, are paying attention to it. We don't have the new effective date. We know what panels might change, it's a fairly minor change for us. It's the Cape Cod watershed, it doesn't really affect us very much. We know the panels that would change, but we don't know the effective date. So basically, we don't have enough data to even bring forward draft language for you. However, when it does hit, we're supposed to adopt it within six months to stay in compliance with the NFIP. So, um, we did let town council know about this. Um, I think we probably will get the effective date within the next month, probably just late enough to make it be like, you know, inconvenient for the board, but we might have time to get it done. What does that look like? Staff with draft language, bring it to the planning board. If the planning board is so inclined, you would, um, make a motion to ask the selectmen to open the warrant and insert it. Um, it's pretty much a housekeeping thing, changing the date and the panel numbers. There's not, if we do get the information in time to advance something for town meeting, it's really, um, a good thing for us to do that, but we have no control over when that information will come. So for now, I just want you to be aware of it, and if it hits, um, it may be something that staff will bring forward to you to advance. And it's not an impactful thing.
Yeah, it wouldn't be, it'd just be kind of in keeping.
It's kind of a housekeeping thing, it's not going to injure anybody, I don't think anyone will get upset, but if we don't comply with the NFIP regulations, that could be impactful. So I just want that on your radar, um, so, in case I come forward, you have heard about it before.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next, and anything else?
That's enough. Oh, minutes, Sherry says.
We have, we do have, um, the minutes of December sixteen, twenty nineteen. Uh, would anybody like, is anybody, everybody comfortable with?
Yeah.
I make a motion, we act favorable in the minutes of December sixteen, twenty nineteen. Is there a second?
Second.
Need further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That, then I would entertain a motion.
I had just had one, one thing if I could just update.
Sure.
Uh, tomorrow evening, there's a meeting in Norwell on the Queen Anne's Plaza forty R sub-district presentations and, um, status of the development of that in Norwell. They're working with MAPC, um, to develop, um, rezoning, mixed-use zoning for three sites in Norwell. And, uh, tomorrow night's meeting is to hear more about the presentation, also to provide some feedback. The first site is the Queen Anne's Plaza forty R sub-district, and that district is basically this little plot of land that is, little big plot of land that's Big Y, currently known as Big Y with Queen Anne's Corner here, and it involves all the buildings within that site, with the exception of the privately owned buildings that are along Washington Street, which is Route fifty-three, the jewelry store, the singular store, things like that, the Citizens Bank. What they're proposing on that site is a hundred to two-hundred housing units and six thousand square feet of commercial space under a forty R. They're also looking at, uh, the Norwell side, uh, east and south of the intersection. I've had some discussions with some of the folks involved, the selectmen and others in Norwell, suggesting that preliminarily, I just called to introduce myself as the liaison from the planning board, and basically was just sharing with them our concerns about impact on, um, infrastructure, traffic studies, um, Queen Anne's Corner congestion, all the things we brought up at the planning board and wanted them to factor in that work. I did get a copy of their traffic study, but it seems to be relatively limited. There was a discussion that we were going to include Main, they asked them to include Hingham Main Street and fifty-three Whiting Street. I haven't seen any of that, so at the meeting tomorrow night, I'm intending to talk about that, that we, we only have a third of the impact.
For the CTPS study? So we, um, MAPC, the MPO representatives and, and town staff are going to approach CTPS.
Okay.
To expand the scope of the traffic study.
Good.
That won't happen as a function of this project. That's a sidebar conversation that the players involved in tomorrow night are where we're going to do it, but they're kind of not cousins. They're distant cousins.
Yeah, I understand. They've included all of the aspects of the, uh, streets, the streetways that impact their site, you know, uh, Queen Anne's Corner is a grade E intersection and failure, uh, the other intersections is B, C, and D, in terms of relative, um, state of, um, of failure. So, um, so that's, I hope to get better information on that tomorrow and see where they stand.
So, um, Mary, I've been out of the business long enough, so I don't remember these things. Forty R is, is a transit-oriented development project. Gary, see if you can figure out under, how, how this is a transit-oriented development. I, I just, I, uh, I struggle, right? I mean, if they're talking about the P and B bus lot, I guess, but otherwise, you know, I don't know how it's a forty R project.
You would think it'd be linked to like a rail line or.
That's typically what they are, right? Right? You know.
It's usually intermodal.
TOD projects in, in Brockton, right next to the commuter rail lines, you know, downtown, right? Um, you're not walking anywhere from the Big Y, so it's, it may not be wildly relevant to the project going forward, but I'd just be curious if, if that question comes up.
I will ask that, because I didn't print the, I was doing some research on forty R and how its applicability to the site, and there were four criteria, um, and, uh, I don't have them on the top of my head, but I will.
And I don't remember them either, but.
I'll print that for tomorrow, but that's key.
It's a great point, because I get zoning benefits from a forty R.
Right.
But the link to the.
And I get subsidies, right?
Yeah. But the link to the.
I mean, the subsidy's probably two-hundred, better than two-hundred thousand for the hundred and twenty units.
Yeah.
And, uh, yeah, I will ask that, it's a good point. And, um, and it's interesting that they're talking about minor changes to basically adding additional lanes for queuing and turning on the three specific intersections here, but they haven't talked at all about redirecting any of this flow away from these congested intersections. In some respects, Washington Street fifty-three is their biggest problem, because it's really a two-lane road. And anything they do here, the other two projects that they're proposing are related to how they're approaching to deal with the north-south, um, traffic congestion. And the second part of this is their Pond Street amenity, I love the titles of these, Pond Street amenity sub-district, and that district is here, this, this piece of land along the pond. And that district is here, this, this piece of land along the pond, along the reservoir. And it has, you go in on the Accord Pond, the drive that goes into the theater between the Porsche dealership, and you come out by the Sunoco Station and the, was it, is that Burger King or something like that? And that's a sub-district that just deals with the perimeter area. And in that, they're talking about a hotel, 127-unit hotel and an 8,000-square-foot restaurant and bar. What's interesting about these three parcels is that they're looking at a four-to-five-story building height and area increase, similar to what we had in our 2012 town meeting, zoning the provision of the bylaw. But they don't, they, in the initial review of this, I was really concerned, they're not, they're not stepping this down or in any way dealing with the center of the parcels. It's still a great big parking area, and the buildings are all on the perimeter. Same with the Big Y, they want to do a five-story building along Route 53 Washington Street, which seems to be totally out of character, too.
Well, their wastewater treatment plant is under the parking lot.
It is at the Big Y.
At the Big Y.
And that.
So that's a challenge.
Unfortunately, it's in failure, or has been since it was built. And so this, this, the Pond Street basically deals with this intersection, which is, this is the exit off 3. This is going into that Accord roadway, and here is Pond Street going along the reservoir. And so their, their ideas in dealing with this are adding queuing and a turning length. Their goal is to basically take the traffic from this sub-district and the traffic from the adjacent sub-district and use 3, channel it to 3, so that they can basically use Route 3 from 13 to 14, which is the primary north-south, as a way of getting around 53. I'm not sure how tenable an idea that is, but this is what they're telling me.
That's right.
This is why I just, you know, and here's the, this is this interlude, Accord interlude district, and that's basically everything by the theater and the car dealership and all those headquarters in there.
There's no entrance through 3 there, is there?
No, there is no entrance there. The entrance is downwind, and then.
Down past the Burger King.
This is, and so you have a real queuing issue here with this exit and sightlines and transitioning from a four-lane road down to a two-lane road by the.
Yeah.
Any, very interesting in terms of the perspective here, because they see it as primarily revenue streams and economic development, but they're not really, this is the Norwell perspective. I haven't heard the rest of the perspective, but I was just intrigued to hear that, or interested, maybe not intrigued to hear that. I'm not seeing anything in terms of, I'm saying it's purely from an economic perspective.
Doesn't the state have to weigh in on the, on that, I don't know what it's called, below Main Street, but whatever the Main Street extension now by Home Depot is, I mean, it's a state road.
State road.
So that, I can't imagine that, it's a lot of traffic already there.
Gary, thank you for.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very curious to hear what you find out.
Appreciate you taking the lead and helping us out.
And I will raise that, because I had the same. I'm going to go back in and look at the enablement of 40R, because I didn't see a.
Do they have fire trucks that can handle a five-story building? That's also a.
No.
It would be mitigation probably from.
Yeah. Buckle free.
Anticipated.
Yeah.
With that, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.